Okay, we're going to start the recognition portion of the meeting. And I would like to turn the recognition portion of the meeting over to our superintendent-elect, Dr. Velez.
All right, thank you. Thank you all very much. I love this time of year and I love recognitions. It's my favorite part of the board meeting, but don't tell the board members. I am really excited because we actually get to see who won the holiday card competition. And so I was one of the judges, and I have to say it was one of the hardest jobs I've ever had because every single card that I looked at was just stunning. So congratulations to those individuals who are winning tonight. We also have employees of the year. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Michael Marble, who's going to kind of start with the presentations and the recognitions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Velez. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. And as Kimberly mentioned, we have two really exciting recognitions tonight. First of all, our holiday cards and then our district employees of the year. So each year, TVUSD holds our much anticipated holiday card design contest, inviting students across the district to create the artwork for our official district holiday cards. This year, we received an incredible 300-plus entries from 12 elementary schools, five middle schools, and our three comprehensive high schools. The talent and creativity on display were truly remarkable, and we couldn't be prouder of our students. It's now my pleasure to invite up our visual and performing arts TOSA, Amy Thomas, who will introduce this year's winning designers.
Hi, everyone. I am so thrilled to be here tonight to celebrate the artistic success of our students and the teachers who support them. So our winners are, in TK through third, we have Phoenix Chapman from Ms. Comro's class at Vale Elementary. Our fourth through F- Phoenix? Oh, come on.
Yep. Students, as your ni- And all the students, as your names are called, you can come right up here. We have a certificate for you, and we're going to grab a picture with a board member as well as I will be joining in this wonderful picture.
Next, our fourth through fifth grade winner is Brooklyn Calipores from Ms. Rieger's class at Rancho Elementary. And just to shout out to our elementary visual arts teachers who help give lessons to all of our elementary folks. Those folks are Edgar Gonzalez, Lisa Dale, and Christina Jansen. And now on to middle school. Our middle school winner is Amy Yu from Ms. Cooper's art class at Day Middle School. And finally, our high school winner is Madigan Bazgal from Ms. Bernardino Lopez's art class at Temecula Valley High School. Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you, Amy, and thank you, families, for being here. One of the first things that I actually got to do in this position was be able to do one of our biggest recognitions for employees, which is our district employees of the year. Which is, you know, considering we have 4,000 employees, 27,000 students, it's a really huge recognition. So our district employees of the year have already been announced, and we surprised them with their family, and many of them are here again tonight so that we can recognize them in front of the board. First up, our confidential employee of the year, Julie Solano. Julie's the administrative assistant in business support services, and she's instrumental in managing a large department and always with a smile on her face. Next up, our classified district employee of the year is Jody Mueller. Jody is our media specialist. She makes all of us look good every day, and I honestly could not do my job without her. Employee of the year. All right. All right, while the photos are going on, our next winner was Dr. William Malone, our site support person of the year. Dr. Malone is our teacher on special assignment focusing on math, whose work is critical in our students' continued improvement in math, which we definitely saw in our CASP results. Okay. Unable to be here tonight is April Tejera. She was our classified administrator of the year. April actually received 27 individual nominations for this award from many different sites, so congratulations to April. And also unable to be here tonight was our district counselor of the year, Jennifer Skumowitz from Temecula Valley High School. And our certificated administrator of the year, Shawna O'Brien. Shawna currently serves as the assistant principal at Tony Tobin Elementary. She brings knowledge, collaboration, and heart to everything she does. And finally, our district principal of the year, Mrs. Erin Nielsen. Erin currently serves as the principal at Abbey Ranky Elementary. Erin's thoughtful and caring leadership has led Abbey Ranky to incredible academic success in addition to a culture of belonging. Congratulations to all of our winners.
I know.
Just take a ton.
Feeling the pressure.
Families who are being shy, feel free to come up and take photos as well. We want to make sure you enjoy that moment. Okay, we're going to allow all our families to take photos now, and we'll take a quick break before we get started with our general session.
Everyone, we're gonna start in just a couple of minutes, so if you could please take your seats. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular open session meeting of the Temecula Valley Unified School District Board of Education meeting on December 4th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. The board has been in closed session since 4:00 PM. In attendance this evening are the governing board, Dr. Melinda Anderson, absent at the present time, Mr. Emil Barham, Dr. Joseph Komroski, Mr. Stephen Schwartz, Mrs. Jennifer Wirsma, Ms. Melissa Kai, student board member, and Dr. Kimberly Velez and the executive team. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance recited by our Chaparral High School color guard.
Okay, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet Lieutenant, Junior Grade Jocelyn Prowl.
And I'm Cadet Master Chief Petty Officer Salma Trevino. I will be leading you through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and remove your hats for the presentation of the colors by Chaparral High School and JRTC led by Cadet Chief Petty Officer Hannah Chavez. Place your right hand over your heart. Pledge of Allegiance, ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Okay. Nice job. Okay. At approximately 9:30 PM, the governing board will determine which of the remaining agenda items can be considered and acted upon before 10:00 PM and may continue all other items on which additional time is required until a future meeting. All meetings are scheduled to end at 10:00 PM. Okay. Board president comment will take place later in the meeting. Actions taken in closed session must be reported to the public once closed session ends. Today's closed session began at 4:00 PM. The Board of Education took the following action in closed session. Number one, it was moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member Schwartz to approve the confidential settlement agreement between Temecula Valley Unified School District and Cronos Sasur Inc., a UKG company. The vote was unanimous, five to zero. Number two, it was moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member Komroski to approve the compromise and release agreement for case OAH number 202-508-0152, and that vote was unanimous, five to zero. At this time, our student board member, Melissa, will introduce students and organizations. Melissa?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As your student board member, I have the honor of introducing tonight's student spotlight. Each month, we have the opportunity to highlight our amazing students from our schools who remind us why we do what we do. Just a friendly reminder, our spotlight speeches are limited to three minutes. From Chaparral, we have Genevieve Hua and Colby Kramer.
Good evening, board members and cabinet members. My name is Genevieve Hua, Chaparral's ASB President.
And I'm Colby Kramer, ASB Vice President. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We're excited to share what our Puma family has been up to.
Earlier this week, we hosted a campus blood drive. Students came together to donate and support a cause that directly impacts our community.
It was powerful to see so many students participate. Events like this remind us that our campus culture isn't just about spirit, but it's about service.
Throughout the past few weeks, we've welcomed several college representatives to Chaparral. These presentations provided students with the chance to explore admissions, programs, and campus life at various schools, allowing them to make more informed decisions about their future.
Students took advantage of this and asked tons of questions. It was great to see our peers planning ahead and taking advantage of their opportunities.
Today, we held our winter sports rally. It was an incredible celebration of our athletes as they head into their seasons.
The energy in the gym was amazing. It showed how much pride our students have in supporting one another.
And we're also thrilled to share that Chaparral was voted the number one student section in Southern California. Being recognized as the best is exciting for us as a school, of course, but we know that it reflects well on the district as a whole, and that's exciting, too. This award recognizes the dedication of our students who attend our games, cheer loudly, and create positive environment at our school.
We would also like to thank Officer Bowers, our school's resource officer.
Thanks to him, alongside the Riverside Sheriff's Office, we were able to donate over 4,000 cans of food to people in need.
Thank you again for your time and continued support of our students, programs, and campus culture.
Please enjoy the short video highlighting our recent events, and we can't wait to share more with you in the months ahead.
Thank you. Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you, Chaparral. And from Great Oak, we have Amina Shams and Cadence Lane.
At the Great Oak Culture Fest, we had informational boards and a timeline of local Native American history on the display. Students could also take feather charms, and they were able to add them to a unity board, and then they were also able to win like a maple like apple candy because we were having pictures taken for our school Instagram page.
Our peer leaders encouraged students to participate in basket weaving taught by members of Indigenous Peoples Club. Round dancing and a few club members also performed board dancing.
Next week, we're looking forward to the winner wish rally. We'll be recognizing students who have been nominated for spreading positivity around campus and being the one. We'll be having gifts from our sponsors, Chick-fil-A Temecula, Jostens, and Oily, the oil change that comes to you.
We will be hosting two rallies, so we have a chance to recognize twice the amount of students while making sure everyone has the opportunity to participate in fun Polar Express themed games.
From the Great Oak family to yours, we hope you continue to be the one this holiday season. We're gonna continue to be thankful for all we have in Temecula. Thank you for hosting us and happy holidays.
Thank you, Great Oak. And from TV, we have Megan Hammond and Kenzie McMcKinnon.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. It's it's funding back so quickly. I'm Kenzie, and because this is our last spotlight for 2025, we wanted to do things a little differently. Tonight, we present our top 10 moments of the semester, a year in review. Number one, we were really proud of our homecoming. The Golden Games filled with tributes and the reaping. We particularly enjoyed watching some of the ASB students dressed as bees or tracker jackers chasing the tributes. We had some laughs watching that. Two, our drive-in movie was a huge success just before break. We decided to go through with the event even though the forecast expected rain. We definitely made the right decision with the great showing to watch the movie real. A bunch of seniors danced in front of the musical in front in front to the musical numbers in the movie. It had a great vibe. Number three, today, we hosted a cultural showcase with with performances by number by a number of the clubs and guest performances from Chaparral's Chinese Culture Club and their Vietnamese Student Association, showing a really awesome umbrella dance and an enthralling fan dance. Number four, everyone had so much fun watching and participating in annual marvelous show. There was even a lightsaber duel on stage. Five, we really we were really proud of our new Golden Guides program, starting this year off strong with each group of freshmen with their Golden Guides dressed up with a theme during our freshman orientation. It was definitely a little extra, but very fun walking around in their groups dressed ridiculously, pacifiers, blow-up dinos, and minion goggles. Our number our number six highlight was the first football game, our gold game. It was by far our best football game of the year in our new student section. It was our most spirited crowd, and everyone had a blast. Number seven, as seniors, we loved the kick we loved the kickoff of the school year with the senior sunrise and parking painting. The donuts were a highlight, but it's the gathering of the people. At the parking painting, a couple seniors even brought a cooler of Otter Pops on wheels and walked the lot handing them out. It's a great community to be a part of. Our eighth highlight was the principal's honorable celebration. They always loved the random cahoot challenges they all played together. This time, they had identify actors and actresses by just a photo of their eyes. Number six, or number nine, was our celebration of our amazing custodial staff for custodial appreciation for all their hard work and for all the hard work they put into our school. We got to celebrate the night crew with their with sandwiches and treats. We're so appreciative. We're so appreciative of the magic they work each night. Our final item on the top 10 is our twofer for athletics. Our boys' water polo team are SoCal State champions. They made it to the CIF championship for the first time in school history then and then ended up going all the way. The other first was flag football. There was so much support for the team. We even had a lunchtime parade through the quads. That's it for TV, and have a wonderful new year. Go Bears!
Alright, thank you, TV. And now it's the time to recognize the important school organizations that support our students and staff every day. From our Classified Employees Association, we have Administrator Ruby Alvaro and President Jennifer Crum.
Doesn't look like they're here, Melissa.
Alright, just kidding. Alright, that is it. Thank you for all the work that you do to keep our schools strong.
Is PTA here by any chance? No? Okay, alright. Okay, thanks, Melissa. Okay, it looks like we have three student comments. So, Linay, please call the first one up.
First up is Jackson Price, followed by Nathan Berry.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Price. I'm a sophomore at TVHS, and I'm here tonight asking the board to vote for Mr. Schwartz, the school board president. Mr. Schwartz has been a mentor to me and my family, guiding us through a very difficult experience I faced at TVHS the past year and a half. Mr. Schwartz has shown me what real leadership and integrity looks like. He consistently puts student first, and I've seen firsthand how deeply he cares about creating a safe, supportive environment for every student. Our district needs someone who focuses on students and solutions, not costly distractions. Unfortunately, Mr. Komroski has been involved in decisions that have led to millions of taxpayer dollars being spent on lawsuits instead of improving classrooms, programs, and support for students like me who want the best education possible. Mr. Schwartz represents a kind of steady, student-centered leadership our community deserves. I fully support him for for student board president. Dr. Anderson, I hope you're watching this, and I hope you're this influences your vote. I know you've been under a lot of stress. I know you I understand how challenging this situation has been. I'm sincerely asking you to please do what's right for students and for parents and vote for Steve who supported me personally, as as well as caring for my education and well-being. Our community deserves leadership that puts students first, not more turmoil or distractions. I'm hopeful you'll stand with the person who's committed to helping us move forward. Thank you.
Next up is Nathan Berry, followed by Emily Weldon.
Good evening, board members and community members. My name is Nathan Berry. I'm a junior at Chaparral High School, and I'm involved in a number of programs on campus. I'm currently the junior class treasurer, play varsity lacrosse, a co-founder of a nonprofit, and the president of an up-and-coming political activism club. I've been in this school district since I started kindergarten. I've had incredible teachers and made strong connections throughout my entire academic career. There are many others like me in this school district who accomplish amazing feats. I've seen numerous students make impressive achievements that I couldn't even imagine. When I look at the actions of the school board, however, I have to say I'm utterly embarrassed. This school board is not reflective of the student population. If you look on Google right now, and I brought it with me, these are the top headlines. Is this what we want our school board to reflect? This is embarrassing. These are all negative articles that highlight the chaos that occurred under Joseph Komroski when he was president. Furthermore, these headlines can become expensive legal fees to take away from the opportunities of the students. Students, teachers, and aspiring young leaders deserve better in a more reflective school board that focuses on genuine issues. I only have a year and a half left, and I would love to see some real change before I start applying to colleges. I want to be proud if any college admissions officer looks up TVUSD because I know there are better headlines than that. It would be reassuring to know that there's a school board that is behind students like me and supports our best interests. You guys serve the students. It is in our best interests. With that, I would like to express my support for Mr. Stephen Schwartz as the board president. Mr. Schwartz's sole focus is in the best interests of the school district, which includes students, their education, staff members, and fiscal responsibility. I believe that Mr. Schwartz has what it takes to shift the focus of the school board into what it used to be, as that was part of the reason my family moved to Temecula in the first place. It is of utmost importance that we progress as a community and not fall back into previous chaos. Thank you for your time.
Last student speaker, Emily Weldon. Last student speaker, Emily Weldon.
Good evening, board members. My name is Emily Weldon, and I'm a senior at Chaparral High School. I'm here today to speak on the issue of tonight's school board presidential election and provide a voice for students like myself. I entered Chaparral as a freshman in August of 2022, and that November, Board Member Komroski was elected. In my four years in the school, I have since lived through the results of his election. Throughout his time as a school board member, I've watched him lead movements to ban pride flags in classrooms, dismantle student confidentiality rights for members of the transgender community, and erase LGBTQ history from our textbooks. These policies have shaped my high school experience. But tonight, I want to tell you the story of my sister's high school experience. My sister graduated from Chaparral in June of 2022, just months before Board Member Komroski was elected. She graduated as ASB Vice President within the top 2% of her class and leading many clubs on campus. She also came out as transgender her senior year. I watched her navigate her transition and felt the reality of having a loved one go through that process. I'm blessed to have a resilient sister who grew through that experience. However, that's not the experience of every student. The Trevor Project reports that states that pass anti-transgender laws aimed at minors see suicide attempts by transgender and non-gender conforming teens rise by 72% in following years. I'm thankful that my sister graduated before Board Member Komroski was elected, but for the sake of all students, I am terrified of the threat to their mental well-being. He said himself that he wants a high-quality education for all. I want to remind him that means transgender students, too. Regardless of your personal beliefs, I want to remind every member of this board that your oath is to serve the students of Temecula Valley. This applied to this applies to all students, and I implore you to elect a president such as Board Member Schwartz that will protect and support every student. Thank you.
Thank you, students. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. Linay, are there any public speakers on consent? I I got it. I got it. Yep. Okay, so there are no public comments on consent. All matters listed on the consent calendar are...
We have one. We have one.
Sorry. Okay. Who's coming up?
David Hatch.
All right. Good morning, everyone. So I'm speaking on the interim financial report here. Is this the right time to speak?
No, I don't think... Not this one, David. No, he's talking about the interim financial statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's later.
Okay.
Sorry about that. We'll get you.
My bad.
We'll get you. Okay, so all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine, and all will be enacted with one vote. There is no discussion of consent calendar items unless members of the governing board or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Dr. Anderson, while she was here, did remove one item that we'll address later, but as a result of that, consequently, I call for a motion and a second to approve Consent Items 2 through 15 that were not pulled for separate action or table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Linay, can you please call the roll?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Student voice?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we're on to information and reports. We have public comments on... I'm going to go one by one. Okay, so are there any... Are there any on board subcommittees? We're going to wait for... Yeah, yeah. So are there any comments, Linay, on item one?
Yes, there's one.
Okay, who would that be?
Greg Lingworthy.
All right, Greg.
So I wasn't sure where to put this, so I have two ideas on board subcommittees. So I'll just give you the ideas, and then maybe you can consider it. One I think is very important is the dress code that I brought up a number of times, and it kind of relates to the second one. The second one has come clear in my mind, both at Marietta and at Temecula, and that's violence in the classroom. I think we've heard a lot of reports of, you know, kids throwing chairs and teachers being assaulted. So I think that should be a subcommittee by itself. You know, how can we address that issue? It's simply the rule of law that's got to be enforced. It's not easy. I've been a teacher, so when there are issues in the classroom, there's got to be backup, and there's got to be a policy. And I think you guys can think through how to solve this problem, because if you don't have a standard of discipline, you can't teach. And I think that's what that teacher was talking about last week, that I think that affected all of us. You know, what he's going through in his classroom has got to be addressed, and I think a subcommittee on discipline would maybe be an answer. So those are my two suggestions. Thanks.
I am going to make a motion on this one to postpone this definitely until the next board meeting. Do I have a second? Any discussion on this? I mean, we can take it up if you want. I'm just... I'm trying to get to the priority of business, which I think is the last part of the meeting. But if you want to take it up, that's great, but I'm going to make this motion.
Give me one second while my computer loads. Okay. We've got Wi-Fi problems here.
What do you look up for, Joe?
The list of subcommittees?
Yeah.
I'll bring it up.
Can you put up the list of subcommittees by any chance?
I'll get it. Oh. If we can go down the line, I just want to see what's... Yeah.
Are there the list of subcommittees?
Yeah. Is this one the policy or the list?
If this is the time and place, I want to ask Mrs. Weirzma, do you have any alternatives on the drug awareness subcommittee as far as drug and alcohol rehab, anything related to that?
This evening, I will probably make an appointment with Nicole Dais to talk through some things for options. I think it's really important for people to know, we are definitely for students getting help with addiction across the board. We've got differing opinions as to what that could look like, and I have done some research on organizations who offer different options. I think the one thing I've discovered in looking at the data is when parents and family are possible to be there through the process, there's a greater likelihood for success. And I don't believe the state dictates exactly what that needs to look like, but we do have to provide support, and I think we all agree to the fact that it should be there on some level. So I do have paperwork. I'm not going to go through it this evening, but I know we'll probably continue to discuss it. And this particular committee has been void for a long time. I brought forward Above the Influence for our middle school students to talk about why you might want to stay away from drugs and how it affects the brain scientifically. I think if we can get our students to understand for themselves why they can make that choice, that's a benefit. I also brought forward the DARE program. Both of those have been turned down at this point. Maybe in 2026, we look at that, along with options for those who are struggling in high schools. So I would like to continue with the committee, but don't have all the information tonight.
Okay. So are we going to discuss subcommittees? Because I want to vote on the motion. So if we're going to do that, let's vote on the motion that I made.
I just wanted just a couple of questions on this, but not all the rest.
Okay, all right. Let's go for it.
Yeah. Okay, so is it fair to say that as an alternative, just in case Riverside Health doesn't get voted in tonight, that this could be a substitution for that? That's specifically my question for you. And number two, would you bring that possible substitution forward in January so that members of the public could be satisfied knowing that there is something that you're working on to present to the board?
I would be hopeful that could be done, yes.
Hopeful, or you will bring something forward in January, at least for us to consider?
I can.
You can?
Absolutely.
And this could be a replacement for what was previously considered the Riverside Health option?
That would be the possible option, yes.
Okay. Okay, so, Linay, I'm going to have you time, okay, because we're not doing that. Mr. Schwartz?
No, I just want to mention, I'm sure all the parents are aware of Red Ribbon Week, when we do a whole program about drug awareness. And I know for a lot of families, if they do have a problem with substance abuse, the costs are prohibitive. So one of the reasons that we had talked about this program from Riverside was that it costs nothing for the families to participate in it, but we're going to talk about it later, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. So I'm going to ask that we vote on the postponement definitely until the next meeting, because I think that there's a lot going on with these subcommittees that we could talk about. And in addition to that, Dr. Velez has a document that talks about the purpose of a subcommittee, all of those things. But in the interest of trying to get to the priority of the business tonight, I would like to vote on the postponement until January, if that's okay. Okay, so, Linay, will you call the roll? Thank you.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes, and thank you to Mr. Lingworthy for bringing forward your suggestions. We can talk about those in the future.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Student vote?
Yes.
Mr. Barham, just to clarify one piece, I know we have postponed this, but that is an existing drug committee that Ms. Weirzma's on, and I heard you, Ms. Weirzma, in terms of working with Mrs. Dais and now transitioning to Dr. McTasney, working with them in the interim, since that committee is still standing. So we'll go ahead and coordinate that.
Okay, perfect. Okay, let's go on to number two. Linay, are there any...
Yes, you have two.
Two public comments?
David Sola, followed by Caroline Hoffman.
Good evening, Mrs. Weirzma. I'm not sure if you got my email. I actually never know if you get my emails, because you don't email me back. But I'm just going to read what I wrote here, because two meetings ago, I came up here and said, from a parent who's experienced filling out the caregiver's affidavit, that there's some discussions and conversations that we can have from experience. And you didn't reach out to me, so I'm just going to go ahead and share it now. I took my niece in. My wife and I took my niece in last year, and we filled out the caregiver's affidavit, and her parents were unable to take care of her. And that experience was pretty tough. It was tough for my niece, it was tough for us, and I was very thankful that Mr. Schwartz was able to help me navigate that. So I appreciate that, Steve. Thank you very much. What you're proposing here, there's some problematic language inside of this. I'm not against strengthening parents' rights. I think we absolutely should do that, especially if you feel strongly about this and your constituents are asking you for that. I think that's a good idea. I just feel like the language here is really problematic. If a caregiver affidavit is presented by an adult who is not listed on the approved emergency contact list provided by the student's custodial parent or guardian, the affidavit must be notarized, verified by direct contact with the custodial parent and guardian, and accompanied by the adult's government-issued photo ID. So under this circumstance, what you're putting here, the words mean things, the language in this is problematic, because you're saying that even though I've already been given permission, and even if I haven't notarized, which I did, to take care and be the caregiver of my niece, you're saying that if I go to pick her up from school, I still need to prove that her parents said that I'm the one that enrolled her in the school. You understand what I'm saying here? This is just... I think we should spend a little bit more time working on this, and I know it's only information reports, and it's not an action item right now, so I appreciate that we do have the time to have this discussion. I just wish I didn't have to come up here and spend my time talking about that, instead of the other things that I would love to talk about. With that said, I fully support us trying to strengthen parents' rights. I think that it's a smart thing to do, especially these days. But I also want to highlight that this is a very strange time to bring forward something like this, because we know that there are kids that, especially in the current political environment, are worried about if their parents are going to come pick them up after school or not. And instead of us saying, "Parents, we got your back. Whether or not we agree with how you got here or where you belong, we got your back. We're going to help take care of your kids." That's not what we're saying. We're saying, "Well, good luck," because you can't prove that you gave someone permission to take care of your kid if you're in jail, or you're locked away, or in El Salvador, wherever the heck they're sending people these days. So anyway, not trying to make this political. The point is, if we're going to go ahead and do something like this, let's talk to the people that have experienced this, so they can provide you with some perspective. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay, so when this was put on the agenda last week, I was going to speak on it, but it feels very performative, and it feels like it's being brought up after the passage of AB 495. You clearly disagreed with that. We have systems in place already when it comes to enrolling people. It mentions court orders, of course. If somebody is not allowed contact with a kid, it's put in their file, they're not allowed. Non-custodial doesn't have to mean that everything is not amicable. It just means that they're not the one who has it. If they still have legal rights, then they're covered. So, I mean, David touched on some of the more restrictive things in the language, but again, we've got rules in place, and this just feels like it's an election year, let me like throw my hat in the ring. So it's just...
Okay. Mrs. Weirzma, three-minute presentation on this?
So first of all, I appreciate the input that was given. When we bring forward something like this for a first read, it is for discussion. And Mr. Sola, I did read your letter, and I think it's great for the board to be able to get discussion from the community and then be able to have it as a board. I think largely this is all political, in the sense that we can all agree, we want to protect our kids. We want to be sure that there's never a situation where somebody fills out an affidavit and can come and pick up a child without the checks and balances. So that's what I'm concerned about, and I'm confident that we'll work together to find that best policy. In fact, when I sat down with Dr. Velez, and I believe Mrs. Dais, they were already discussing it, because AB 495 did create a lot of angst across the state. We've received a lot of questions, and we want to handle it as a district. So I felt good in knowing, I sat down with them and said, "What can we do?" And there needed to be an update. So I think we're all on the same page with that, and what it will look like, we may not know until next year. But the goal is to provide safeguards for children and their families, and not simply just release them to someone who has an affidavit. It's important to document them district-wide and to set the tone through form of board action. So that is the goal. When I talked to an individual from the Riverside County Board recently, he said one of their number-one concerns actually is trafficking, that it's not conspiracy theory. There is a threat. We don't have to obsess about it, but we can tighten up policy and be sure that if they're not on that list, where a family lists their emergency contacts, we do need something more. We should be asking for photo IDs. We should be matching policy at every school to be sure we're not missing anything. There was also a district to the south of us that used the same language. They did have it vetted legally, and it was found to be sound. So even the notarized aspect, which perhaps there are those here that might disagree with me, we can take the extra step. The law doesn't require it, but I'm just always thinking, outside the box, what can we do to the very best of our ability, so that all of our parents and guardians and caregivers can feel like we've done everything that we can do, and our kids are safe. Our sheriff also had some suggestions, and I won't read them now, because I've only got 30 seconds, but I want us all to come together and be on the same page, and I'm confident in 2026, with the work of the staff and sharing with one another, we'll get there.
Okay. Dr. Kamroski, any discussion?
Yeah, just brief. Well-spoken, Mrs. Weirzma. We're on the same page. When AB 495 was enacted, I was on the phone, or even before it was preemptively, I was on the phone with the city council person. We were on the phone with Mike Heston, our district attorney, and Sheriff Chad Bianco, and even kicked this up to Edwin Gomez, Riverside County Board of Education, with Dr. Wood. So I take it very seriously, and I'm with you. I wouldn't say it's apolitical. It's embedded in the language where we have flexibility, but make no mistake about it, parents in Temecula, we care about your kids, we want to make sure they're safe, and we don't want anybody pulling a kid out unless they're signed out properly, emergency contacts, blah, blah, blah. We can go on and on. But I just want to echo Mrs. Weirzma's sentiments, that I was very proactive with this, and Dr. Wood said that this was the hill he was going to die on, so that no one would be released. So just in a broad scope, and I haven't met with Dr. Velez and asked your perspective, but yeah, we'll die on the hill of parental rights, and this is good. It's proactive. That's it.
Is that it? Okay. Mr. Schwartz? Two minutes, or two minutes?
Yeah, I'm just curious where this document came from that you put on the agenda. Did you write it yourself?
So I cannot claim credit for having written the whole thing myself.
Can I just get a straight answer? Did you write it yourself, or did you get it from somewhere else?
This came from a trustee that I have known for several years, and we talked together. Lakeside Union.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll make my comments.
I don't think we have to be rude.
I'm not being rude. I'm trying to understand if you wrote this document and brought it to us, or if it's someone else's work that you're putting out, because it's got a lot of flaws, which I have researched, which I'm going to enumerate right now. Number one, it's an overly broad interpretation of custodial parents. It should acknowledge joint custody unless a court says otherwise. If a caregiver affidavit is presented, it must be notarized. This violates California Ed Code 48204 and 48204.1. Government-issued ID required for all not custodial parents, maybe, but not necessarily. Notarization requirement for caregiver affidavits is unlawful. Mandatory verification with custodial parents also unlawful. Restricting release only to those on the emergency contact list. So whoever wrote this, wrote it, but didn't really do the research about how it works under the law and Ed Code. I am all for protecting kids, but this needs to be revised, so it's legal and it follows Ed Code. Thank you. I am all for protecting kids, but this needs to be revised so it's legal and it follows Ed Code. Thank you.
Dr. Velez, I know that Mrs. Dais has been doing some work on this. Can we have her speak to some of the work that she's doing?
Yes, absolutely. Mrs. Dais?
Thank you. And I wanna thank Ms. Weirzma for bringing this to us because we were able to have a really good conversation about it. I wanna also reiterate that in Student Services where we work with the caregiver affidavits, we share absolutely the same concerns and priority of making sure that our students are in the best possible care, that they're protected. It's extremely difficult. I mean, I don't know if anyone has tried to pick up a student, and you're not, even if you're listed as emergency contact, they're still gonna reach out to home. We are taking precautions in an abundance of care and caution with our caregiver affidavits. We've added other layers in there, like putting it on as a flag on Infinite Campus. A parent can't walk in, or a person can't walk in with a caregiver affidavit that they just printed out and hand it to the school and say, "I want, I need this student." We have across-the-board checks and balances, matching policy for all of our sites. It's run through our centralized enrollment center and Student Support Services, and we are able to document it district-wide. So I wanna say, in terms of this, we have to, as a school district, come up with model guideline and board policy by the spring. The state has given us that task. So again, appreciation to Ms. Weirzma for starting the conversation. The only thing I will add in terms of Mr. Schwartz's comment is that we have received legal guidance that asking for it to be notarized could be problematic. But I wanna say an assurance of that, that that doesn't mean that there's negligence involved. Both things can be true. We can make sure we're following the scope of the law while we are putting in temecula safeguards to make sure that all of our families feel safe and protected and that they know that their students are gonna be in good hands throughout the day. So thank you. If there's any other questions you guys have, I'm happy to answer. But we are happy to partner on this work and make sure we get it right.
Okay. Mrs. Weirzma, you want your two minutes?
I probably don't need two, but Mrs. Dais, thank you for that. Question for you. I know I read in the update that there are plans to remind parents to update their emergency contacts. Can you tell us about that communication? Do you look to do that in 2026, or what are the plans there?
I actually would love to do it immediately in our community outreach. Make sure that we're reminding parents that you should know exactly who your emergency contacts are. All of our parents had to do the online registration and update those emergency contacts in anywhere between June and August. But it's super important to note that you have the ability to update those at any time. You just need to reach out to the school, and if you're not getting a response, you reach out to us. So we wanna remind our parents about that as well. I will say our counselors at our school sites have already been updating parents about that in terms of students who've had a fear about what the outcome could be if their parents are not there to pick them up. So we've already started that acknowledgement and important recognition, but we'll put it out to all of our parents soon and then have a formal reminder when we do our online registration.
Great, thank you. And can you remind us how many contacts they should have?
I'm speaking as a parent. I've had anywhere between four and six on my list, and you get to number them in accordance to priority. And I also wanna say that having handled our caregiver affidavits in our department over the years, there's so many extenuating circumstances like we heard this evening, most of which are highly immediate, emergent, and at times traumatic for families. And so our goal is to work with our families in those moments, knowing that if a caregiver affidavit is actually being signed, there's a story there, and it's our job to partner with our families so we can get it right.
Right, which is why parents should have as many on there as they can. Because very likely, an affidavit might be presented by one of those contacts on the list. So thank you for answering those questions.
Okay. Dr. Kamroski, do you want a second round?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Just wanna say thank you, Mrs. Dais, for that specificity. Really appreciate it. And broadly speaking to the community, yeah, we as a board take this very seriously, and so does our representative executive staff. Really appreciate your efforts there.
Mr. Schwartz, would you like to speak again?
No, I would like to, well, just to thank Mrs. Dais for clarifying. This is an important issue, and I wanna make sure we get it right, that we don't do anything that's illegal or against Ed Code or put people in a situation that they can't deal with. Thanks.
Mrs. Weirzma, you get one last comment.
I think we're all on the same page here, and I wanna say it's an honor to network with trustees throughout Southern California. We have a lot of people with a lot of wisdom and knowledge, and yes, I do collaborate with them to see what they're doing. I work full-time. I love being a school board member. But it's often very helpful to have a multitude of counselors in trying to figure out how to put things together. So we will get this to where it needs to be, and I'm sure the community will appreciate that work.
Thanks, Mrs. Weirzma. Okay. Are you gonna bring this back for another read? Is that the plan? Second read?
Yes, so it'll come back in action.
Okay, okay, perfect. Alrighty, let's move on to number four. Linay, are there any public comments on number four? How many? Oh, did we keep three on there? I thought we removed it. Kept it on there? Oh, that's right, Mrs. Weirzma. You want, I'm sorry. Okay, Mrs. Weirzma, you get three minutes to... Did Schwartz add it? Okay, sorry about that. All right, Mr. Schwartz, you got it.
I did agendize it because several, I'm trying to remember the date, and let me just make sure I have the right date. September 29th, I got a text from a board member in Murrieta asking me where I was. And I said, "I'm home eating dinner. Why? Where are you?" She said, "Well, I'm in San Bernardino." I said, "Oh, that's nice. What are you doing?" She said, "I'm at the, I'm the SDO delegate from Murrieta, and this is our SDO delegate meeting. Why aren't you here?" I said, "I don't know why I'm not there. It's the first I've heard of it." And since I'm not the SDO delegate, we do have one. I was just curious as to why we were not included in the meeting and why none of us were invited to go there. So that's why I put this item on the agenda.
Okay, okay. All right.
... of the Riverside and San Bernardino County School Boards Association on October 20th at the Doubletree in San Bernardino. The goal at this meeting was to replace three county committee members whose terms expired this year. Unfortunately, that day I was unable to attend due to extenuating circumstances. But I did follow up with four fellow trustees. Again, those relationships are really important. And also two county representatives. So here is what I found. That day, there actually was no quorum for any kind of vote due to the fact that many trustees found themselves in a similar situation like me and were unable to attend. According to the Lake Elsinore representative, they needed seven additional members to make that happen. And Riverside County Board Member Ben Johnson told me it's been requested several years in a row for this meeting to be held in the evening, after work hours, or by Zoom. Because I was one of many who just had issues that particular day. So everyone needs to be able to attend. If they wanna offer this, they need to make it equitable, I guess you could say, and be sure that it works. And so whoever's the representative for next year, that's what I would suggest, is make sure it's in the evening or on Zoom. Ben Johnson also mentioned that an important issue he'd like to see addressed within this group is the topic of child trafficking, which I mentioned, which we are looking to fully prevent to the best of our ability here at TVUSD. Also, the general consensus was the best aspect of this entire event was a chance to rub elbows and network with others, which I'm always down for that. But that the meeting afterwards lacked a little bit of substance. There were supposed to be helpful tips and tricks in increasing attendance, but from what I gathered, it fell a little bit flat since the meeting was conducted with little input from those who attended. So I did the best I could do to glean the information, and hopefully the representative next year will be able to attend. But thank you for asking for that.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion on item number three by any board member? Okay. All right, let's move on to memorandum of understanding Riverside University Health System.
Point of order. I think Dr. Anderson wanted to be here for that and pushed it off to the end. Am I not correct?
I don't think so. No.
Okay.
No, she did not. Okay, so how many public comments do we have on this, Linay?
Sorry, I was looking back at what the motion was. There's five.
Okay, who's number one?
First up is Josh Shirley, followed by Danny Molina.
I got to spend a wonderful time with Ms. Nicole Dais at a meeting where she discussed this memorandum. Danny Molina was with me, and Mel Beatrix was also there. I asked some very pointed, hard questions and got phenomenal answers. I feel that we need more information from the horse's mouth, not me. I'm gonna steal a little thunder. We've worked with this group for already for a couple of years. This isn't a new organization coming in to do things. My first question was, "How is it paid for?" I don't like the idea of a private company coming into our schools, using our kids to put into their beds to make money off of insurance or off of parents. That raised red flags to me. I was told, or I'm remembering, please correct me if I'm wrong with the head shake, it's just, yes, and you let me know. It's funded by a grant from the state of California. So this isn't even our property taxes. This is from the state that pays for this system. We have to have something. This isn't just drug awareness. This isn't just like, you know, educate the kids to let them know what not to do. Our district actually does a very good job. My kids tell me about fentanyl. I'm very impressed with what they've gotten. But this is for, you have a student who's not able to stay awake because they're hungover or they're still high. What does a teacher do when they see this, when they see these signs? Dare isn't going to help that. Rise above isn't gonna help that. You need actual resources. And that's what this program has been for the last two years. This is not a door within a door for mental health to allow trans kids to, like, there's none of that in this. This is for drug and alcohol and working with kids in the classrooms to do, to provide them the best education. I think the thing that we should actually really do is allow Ms. Dais to explain to us because I am fully behind, because there are kids, these are real problems, that affect our homes. So thank you for the time. Please give us consideration. Thank you.
Next speaker is Danny Molina, followed by Cole Everyman.
Good evening, everybody. This is the fourth time now that I'm discussing this item. All three times I've opposed it. I was able to meet with Ms. Nicole Dais, and I received some information that changed my mind. And it was interesting because I think that this is information that if I'm unaware of, I know a lot of the public is unaware of. Like, first and foremost, Josh said, this is already a program that we've been using. This isn't something new that we're bringing in. As much as I have my knowledge and understanding of UHS as an organization, and you can Google them and see, you know, issues that they have, the issues that people are concerned about, we didn't experience in the three years that we've had this program. If so, those parents would come forward. I've tried to do my due diligence and my research on this. And again, my mind has changed on this, just so everybody understands and is clear. My mind has changed on this because the important thing is, is how this was used. When a child, it's my understanding that when a student was caught with drug paraphernalia or high and/or drunk on campus, there was disciplinary action. This program was used as a resource to, in addition to that disciplinary action, to turn them away from drugs or try to give them some sort of education. And it required parental consent already. So this was a program that troubled students were using in order to turn away from drugs, and parents were very much involved. And I think that that's an important aspect to understand. It was my understanding that this was maybe something new that was being brought forward, and it's not. And I think that that's an important piece of the puzzle that the community needs to understand here. Additionally, I know that Dr. Kay and Jen Weirzma discussed the potential for different alternative options, and I'm okay with that. I'm great with that. I also was connected with a very knowledgeable resource, a person who is very connected to when these medical organizations get involved in schools and the way they undermine parents and the goal to turn kids trans and things like that. I understand that that's a contentious argument. And I understand that there's some legitimacy to it when you talk to some people and other people think that it's a conspiracy theory. But the important thing to know is, we're talking about helping kids who are struggling with drug and alcohol abuse in our school. So if we don't like UHS, I'm with that. If we gotta come together to get another program, I'm with it. Parental involvement is important. That's been happening. And the other thing that I'm sure Nicole Dais will hit is, the students who have been on this program, we have 100% non-repeat offenders, which is important to know. So thank you.
Cole Everyman, followed by Christine Masa.
Good evening, governing board and cabinet members. Initially, when this UHS contract and program was brought forth, and knowing their history in our town overall, I completely agreed with not approving this contract. I continued to support the decision to not bring it back, even after the presentation on October 14th by Mr. Jess Capenegro and the Student Support Services Department, which highlighted the impact the program had on our 117 students who benefited from it. However, I initially missed that UHS was part of the success until I went back to review the meeting again. Unfortunately, due to bureaucracy of this board battling each other at every turn, the public has never been granted the proper opportunity to hear all of the facts, the impact, and details that are pertinent to either objecting to this contract or supporting it. I have to humbly admit, after reaching out with more questions and collaborating with district staff and community members, I have now been well-informed on this contract and how much this program is needed as an option to parents and families. The key word here is "option." Parents and families should have access to these free services, especially during a vulnerable time of need on their students' behalf. With 100% success rate, which is an anomaly in itself, there's no reason not to approve this contract as there are clear safeguards in place to protect the students and their families in need. The primary and most important of these safeguards is needing parents to sign off before any services can take place. Parents are also included in the treatment plans for their struggling student. I understand the reputation of speculations regarding UHS because I have them myself. However, I am confident that our district has created a transparent contract and options for families. The proof is in the pudding, how incredible that 117 students have not only benefited from this program but have moved forward in their academic achievements, coping and living with healthier choices with the comfort of knowing they have people at their school and at the district that can rely on and seek help when they need it. I'm sincerely hurt and genuinely concerned, knowing that this hasn't been available since it was rescinded, and how many students were impacted by this decision that have possibly regressed or relapsed, and they, along with their families, no longer have anyone to turn to unless they sought private services through insurance or paying out of pocket, which, as we all know, isn't feasible for most families in this economy right now. No child, no matter how young or old they are or what their particular needs are, should go without services that will heal them or at the very least, put them on a healthier path, not just in their academics, but into their adulthood. Please approve this. Please show those students, their families, and our community, sorry, I'm trying to get the time, that you truly do the, do put the kids first, no matter their circumstances, and truly support parental choice. Thank you.
Next up is Christine Masa, followed by Lindsay.
Hi there. So I didn't really prepare anything for this, except while I was sitting there. I don't have any stats. I just decided to speak because I really can't tolerate the hypocrisy of some of the people sitting up here on the dais and talking about this subject. You can't say that you support drug abuse education and yet not want to support a drug abuse treatment program. We already know there's budget shortfalls. It'll continue. Consequently, I imagine a kid on drugs has a pretty bad attendance issue. That'll also cost the district more money. And there isn't any more money coming in from anywhere else to help manage this. So why are you speaking out of both sides of your mouth? This is like being pro-life and then not supporting WIC. So if you're gonna support fighting drug abuse, you have to come at it from all angles. Take this opportunity. Thank you.
Last speaker, Lindsay.
Hi, I'm Lindsay. I sit in Ms. Wiersma's district. I'm here again to advocate for passing this MOU. This agreement works collaboratively with the student, the parent and/or the teacher, per the language in the MOU, and it cannot go into effect without parental consent. I want to remind you, we're in violation of two ed codes, one board policy right now. This is not in place. I spent hours and hours trying to trace the source of a certain video that's been circulating social media by certain community members who initially opposed supporting RUHS, claiming this program would maybe transition students to the opposite sex. After extensive searching, I couldn't find a single connection or evidence tying that video to this MOU. The time I literally spent debunking this myth was frustrating, especially when this group's sole mission is to support students, their parents and/or their teachers in helping kids get back on track, learning, thriving and staying clean and sober. I also spent hours, one day, calling RUHS myself. I probably spoke with three different individuals over the course of six hours to better understand the program and to explore how we can bridge the divide between community members who support this and those who just don't understand it and don't support it. I asked tough questions and I received clear thoughtful answers. For families who wanted a faith-based approach included in counseling, RUHS will work to incorporate that into an appropriate and individualized plan to help students overcome substance abuse. This is a necessary program. RUHS holds 100% success rate. Students who complete the program have not returned to campus using drugs or alcohol. That level of impact, it's rare. It's honestly unheard of and it's something we should be fighting to keep, not dismiss. I strongly urge this board to reconsider the tremendous value this group provides. Again, nothing can be done without parental consent. This exact program was, has been effective in our previous time with 100% rate, like our previous speaker spoke about during its previous implementation into TVUSD. And there is absolutely no reason it should not exist here now. I agree if you want to include another option, something else, I support that. But right now, we have nothing. These kids have no support. Their families may not have the money or resources to provide these services. They need something now. We're in violation. We've been in violation. It's time to put an end to it and time to vote it in.
Is that it for publics? Okay. Okay, so yeah, I have brought this back four times because I just did not, first of all, I want to own the fact that I voted this down. And the reason I voted it down is not a good one because I was distracted with all of the outside people coming in here and that sort of thing. But once I went to really investigate what was going on with this program, I changed my mind. And that is why I have been adamant, okay, to bring this back. Because treatment is not the same as prevention. They're two different things. And we need, we need, I mean, with all due respect, dare is about prevention. We need treatment. And we are out of compliance with ed code. The county is, you know, we need to help support our kids. We've had 117 kids go through this program. I didn't even know that we had had it when I voted it down the first time. We've had it for two years. There's never been an instance where a parent has come back and complained and said, you know, you're, there's no door for abortion or gender-affirming care or any of those types of things. This is about drug treatment. And we need to support these kids. Our expulsions are gonna start getting overturned by the county because we don't have something in place. And this is a free program. We are gonna have to go outside, if this is not approved, in a very difficult budgetary time and spend six figures, okay, to get something in place. And Mrs. Dias tells me that we're having a tough time even finding a place to do it because, you know, we're, these places are inundated with kids that are having these addiction issues and alcohol issues. So it's free. It doesn't cost us anything. It's, we've had it for two years. Our principals swear by it. We have 100% success rate. I don't know what we're doing here if we're not gonna approve this. So, that's my take. And I'd like Mrs. Dias or Dr. Velez, can you direct Mrs. Dias to talk about this for just a few minutes, please?
Yes, I think Ms. Dias, you are prepared to talk for just a minute or two.
Yes, thank you so much and I will be brief. I do want to confirm a couple things. Well, first of all, I want to state that my name has been used a lot with this agenda item and topic. But when I'm here behind the dais, no pun intended, I am not Nicole Dias. I am representing the thousands of students and staff and families in our district. That's my job. I want to confirm a couple things that we haven't been able to up to this point. And the main one is the information about parental consent. TVUSD would not agree to something that did not absolutely require parental consent. Does this counseling require parental consent? Yes. If a parent denies it, it doesn't happen. We mark the box that we offered it. We don't push it. What if a student self-refers? That's an incredibly brave thing to do and it does happen. If a student has a friend who's involved with this and seeing his or her friend's success, we have had students come forward and say, can I have this too? We do not engage that student with this service without communicating with home and getting parental consent and approval. How does this connect with ed code and discipline? Well, supporting our students and disciplining our students can be simultaneously true. State law asks us to use alternatives to suspension whenever possible. If a student is under the influence or in possession, there's probably gonna be suspension involved. But ed code 48900.5 and 48915, along with our board policy 5131.6, expect schools to pair substance abuse-related discipline with interventions. It's in our board policy and it's in our state ed code. This program has helped us and will help us address root causes and support academic success rather than pushing students out with discipline only, which is not necessarily helpful to families. A lot of times when a student is presenting under the influence, that is probably the hardest time those parents have had with their children. And it's our job to partner with our families. That is the main goal through this in supporting their student. Is there a drug abuse problem in TVUSD? Well, we're not facing a major crisis, but we do have incidences of drug abuse and under the influence. That's true. And vaping, concentrated marijuana, smokeless tobacco are rising county and statewide. And being proactive gets students and families early support and helps prevent bigger problems from happening in the future. I also would like to confirm that RUHS offers faith-based counseling. And I also would like to confirm that if there's any discussion or ideas, I would love to hear them. I am ready, willing and able, on behalf of Student Support Services with our board and our community, if anybody wants to reach out to me and discuss further, that's my job to partner with you. And that includes adding any added layers of support or safeguards that are right for TVUSD. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. Mr. Schwartz, two minutes. Yeah, having been in the classroom for 30-
Can I just have a question?
Yes.
We motioned to postpone this indefinitely at the beginning of the meeting and then we said we were gonna take. I just want to clarify, everyone.
We're moving on.
Wait, I'm looking. So I want to clarify because I was watching but I was gone. So, we motioned to postpone indefinitely.
You motioned at the wrong time.
Are we gonna stay by that or are we gonna go through and debate and vote on it?
We're already debating.
No, no, no. I need the board to, everyone, please be quiet because I just walked in. So, let me hear from the board.
I'll just let you know that I asked Mr. Barham, hey, didn't we, didn't we have consensus to push this to later in the meeting until you arrived? Because you wanted to be here and he said no. So we didn't have consensus on that. So we just let it continue because since you weren't here.
So what about the motion that we made to postpone indefinitely? And we had a three-person vote.
You'd have to direct that at Mr. Barham.
Just, can I?
She doesn't want to direct it to me, folks.
Okay, so, so is my memory correct? On changes to the agenda, did we, Laney, can you remind me?
I have that it was motioned to postpone indefinitely and three people agreed. But then there was a point of order because he was saying that the motion was read at the wrong time.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I told him, no, we've already motioned to postpone this. We didn't even need to put it on the agenda. It's been put on the agenda as confirmed four times. There's not a majority vote to support it. It was motioned to postpone definitely. And Dr. Komraski said he wanted to hear from the speakers and from Mrs. Dias. So we've allowed that to happen. There is not going to be, from the beginning unless, let me just ask the board, did anyone change their mind that voted to postpone this indefinitely? Is anyone, Dr. Komraski, are you gonna vote to bring it back? Did you change your mind?
No, I already voted in the beginning of the meeting with you.
You voted at the beginning, Mrs. Wiersma. Did you change your mind?
I didn't change my mind on actually voting tonight. But now that we've gotten the information, I think what we've agreed and because I'm on the Drug Committee and have heard these things, to come back in January. So, I don't think we need to vote, but we have heard people. We've heard Mrs. Dias. I can speak to it, but I think at this point, we hold on to it and work towards a solution for January.
For January?
Yes.
And that being said, with the majority, there are three people that can bring this back. It's not dead. But I was watching and I, when you talked about dare, I'm under the impression that we're gonna bring this back in January. Okay, so there is consensus with three people that we're gonna bring it back in January.
Excuse me, there's an ambiguity. Point of order, bring-
This particular, this topic of how are we going to fill this vacancy?
All right.
Mrs. Wiersma says that she has possibly something to present. There's three board members that have voted no, over and over again. So this has been postponed definitely, Mr. Barham. You can't bring it back. There's no point in this like arguing.
Oh, I can bring it back.
No, no, no. Point of order indefinitely. You just, I'm just correct.
I can bring it back and I will bring it back again next time.
No, you won't.
Oh, yes, I will.
And then you're gonna pay your attorney to sue the board.
You know what, I'm just trying to, I am trying to follow Robert's rules of order, okay? Which you clearly, Dr. Anderson, with all due respect, do not understand that you bring a motion of postponement with the motion. Do you understand? Would you like to, would you like to take a recess and Google it? You don't want to do it. And here we are with-
We're on action item number one.
You know what, I'm still on my-
No, point of order, get out of order.
I am on my second, we're not done with this.
No, we are done because it was postponed and we're not gonna do it.
I still have my two minutes here.
No, there's no two minutes. It was postponed. There's, and it's, and we've removed it several times, Mr. Barham.
You know what?
I'm gonna call a five-minute recess.
This community wants this passed.
Do I have a second for a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Do I have a second for a five-minute recess? Okay. So we have a five or two-minute recess.
Boy, unbelievable. That's unbelievable. Well, it's, yeah, exactly. Because, you know why? Because, you know why?
Need one more board member up here. I need, uh, Dr. Kamroski, please come up. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. The first action item. Is the interim report, Mrs.? I can't find the gavel.
No gavel.
You gotta, you gotta have gavel, man.
Yeah, absolutely.
Action item number one. Do we have any public comments on action item number one?
Who's the first public comment?
Okay. David Hatch? Okay, before David Hatch comes up.
Is video down, Jose? Is it good? Is the video live? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barham, you are participating in disorderly conduct. You're out of order. This is your first warning. Your second warning, I am going to ask the board for consensus to have you participate from the break room via Zoom. So that, we need to get through this meeting and yelling into the microphone and yelling at the board president is out of order.
You cannot do that by law. You cannot do that by law.
Mr. Barham, you're out of order right now?
You don't think I've researched that?
Mr. Barham, you're out of order.
You don't think I've researched this? You cannot remove me from the day.
We're going to take another two-minute recess until Mr. Barham can take his turn talking. Set a two-minute timer. All right, we're ready for? Okay. Yes, Mr. Barham, the attorneys are calling us back. They said they have never witnessed this type of behavior before from a board member. I am going to ask you to not speak unless it's your turn and to not yell at other board members. So, we're going to, this is your second warning. So embarrassing. So let's go with the first.
David Hatch?
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Hatch.
All right, yes. Uh, so I'm here to talk about action item number one. Uh, the, what is it? First interim financial report. So this is a little more dry. Hopefully we'll tone it down a little bit. I took a deep dive into this report, 129 pages. So if I look a little tired, it's because I am a little tired. I learned more about school finances than I really ever wanted to, which now I learn more about Robert's rules than I ever wanted to. So there's good news. We gave ourselves positive certification. That's awesome. That's government speak for we can pay our bills for three years without having to sell the desks. So I know how to read a financial report. So this is where it gets interesting. We're projected to spend over $19 million more than we bring in next year. The year after that, 20 million more. Year after that, 20 million more. I live in America. We have a $40 trillion debt. This is unsustainable as a district. So our savings account, the fund balance, has gone down 35% after, well, it'll go down in the next few years from 124 to 80 million. If everyone in here's 401K dropped 35%, a lot more people would care about this. But this is not going to end up well. Another good thing, some bright spots, I found out what LCFF funding is. Funding is up. That's great. It's up because TK students, you know, they're getting more, we're getting more funding for TK students, which is great. I have a TK student. So you're welcome, everyone in here, for my contribution to income for this district. I have another one coming to the district in a few years. So I am happy to support that. But that is like your grandma giving you 20 bucks under the table. And guess what? Eventually grandma dies, you guys. It's not going to work. I'm sorry, but our fiscally, we are not going down a good road. So our expenses are growing, salaries, benefits, utilities, pensions, uh, big projects like Benton and Porroy. You know, it doesn't show a crisis today. It shows a crisis coming up. So we need to elect fiscally responsible leaders to take the reins of leadership in this, uh, on this board. Please.
Point of order, don't interrupt the speaker.
Uh, it's all right. I'm very loud and I have a daughter. So my only point here, really, we should acknowledge the direction the numbers are headed. Please, plan responsibly now before we're forced to make decisions we don't want to make, right? I don't want to have to sell my kid's desk and have him sitting crisscross applesauce. So I can't do that anymore because of my knees. But, uh, I'm going to get out of here. Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention.
Thank you. Mrs. Lash, you're on.
I'll try and live up to the promise that this is going to be dry. Okay, good evening, everyone. Nicole Lash here, Assistant Superintendent of Business Support Services, and it's my honor to present the budget to you tonight. It was a huge undertaking to get this done by December 4th. So I'm going to start off with some gratitude for my entire fiscal services department and my administrative assistant who worked over the holiday to make sure, to make this boarding meeting happen and have this financial information ready and accurate. So a huge thank you to Kevin Brinak, our Executive Director of Business Services, Amit Saha, our Assistant Director, and Julie Solano, our Administrative Assistant, and also Confidential Employee of the Year. So with that, we'll get started. Oh, it's, let's see. I think it needs batteries. Okay, so as a reminder, we build our budget. It's not a guessing game. It's built on the best information that we have at the time. And it's based on conversations. It's based on what we're doing programmatically throughout the district. And we have lots of conversations and make lots of, lots of estimations and projections based on trends and information as we know it today. So tonight, we're going to talk about some budget highlights, where we were six or seven months ago when you last saw the budget, which was in June, how we've addressed some of the budget shortfalls that have already been discussed, and what first interim looks like, and then closing thoughts. So some really good news that I'd like to highlight, our enrollment is up due to that TK window expansion, right? Any student who turns four by September 1st now is able to enroll in transitional kindergarten. Along with that came a new student to adult ratio. It used to be 12 to 1, now it's 10 to 1. So we did receive some additional funding for that, but our enrollment is up because of that increase in the birthday window. So with that came an additional TK add-on, which is great news. Our attendance is up, and we're going to talk about that in a few slides. Our unduplicated pupil percentage is also up. All of those are good news to the budget. We did receive one-time additional grant funds, and we are working our way through becoming an all-apple district. And so that's some of the things that we've been working on thus far this year. So here's a snapshot of what I presented to you back in June. This was the adopted budget, and it was looking pretty scary. You see, right in the middle there in bold was our deficit. And it's, it was around 25 to 30 million dollars, okay? And some of that was spending down of one-time funds, but also a huge part of that was the structural deficit. So if you look at the bottom there, I showed our savings account, which we were projected to dip into at a pretty quick rate, being at only 7.7 million dollars in '27, '28. So we've made some adjustments after our budget adoption, and here are some of the things that have happened since then. So we've really, really been working on our attendance. Our Student Support Services Division has been doing huge incentives. I don't know if you've seen, there's like a six-foot trophy that we pass around as, in competition for attendance incentives. That started last year. This year, we're offering incentives to schools if they can beat their own records to increase their site allocations, just to encourage folks to have buy-in, to get their attendance rates up. As a parent, every week in the Friday updates, I receive a notification in the smore that says, here's why attendance matters. Here's why your student needs to come to school. They perform better, they don't fall behind, their grades are better, their graduation rates are better, all of these things. So we're doing all these things to remind parents why it's important to get kids to school and increase that attendance. But also this year, the laws changed around attendance recovery, and they've become more lenient. So we've been doing all the things that we can do to recoup ADA in addition to increasing our attendance rates. And we're, we're seeing the fruits of that labor. So over the summertime, we do credit recovery summer school. We actually are now utilizing that credit recovery summer school to recoup ADA. So all good things, and because of that, we've increased our attendance rates by 3% in three years. From 91.5% to 94.5% attendance in three years. It's incredible. And that doesn't just happen, that's through pointed efforts to get attendance rates up. So that's good news. And it has a direct financial impact to the organization. We reduced travel and conference. We've said unless it's tied to your strategic plan, unless it's essential to your job function, and really where we've pulled back is how many people we send. We're doing the train-the-trainer model. Instead of sending everyone, we send a couple people, they bring the information back, and they do the training. So we've reduced our traveling conference by $100,000 this year. We are trying to get really creative with our funding sources. So we're, we've gone through on-bill financing for some purchases. We've gotten grants for our electric buses. And we, uh, we tried to do, we tried to use our Nutrition Services Department funds whenever we can for like lunch tables and shade structures. We're trying to be as creative as possible to maximize our limited dollars. And then last year, we utilized one-time funds to pay for the off-schedule payment for our staff, for our employees. So we're really trying to use our dollars wisely. And then lastly, we're evaluating all of our expenditures. We're evaluating contracts, we're evaluating services to see how can we make our dollars go farther. So we did a full analysis of Apple Care. We were buying Apple Care and all of our Apple products. So we did an analysis of what if we didn't buy Apple Care? What's our damage rate? What would we have spent had we not had Apple Care to, to repair those things? And we decided it was more financially advantageous to not buy Apple Care moving forward and to do, because it, um, we'll actually spend less money that way. So we're evaluating it every turn, and we do this anyway, but we're doing it with as much fidelity as possible because we understand that every single dollar counts. Uh, and things like instead of refreshing devices every four years, we're going to refresh them every five years. Trying to be really creative to stretch those dollars for the last six months, let's call it. And so with that, here's our first interim report, and it looks much better. Look at that net increase-decrease. Remember that was 25 to 30 million dollars just six or seven months ago? It's now in the $20 million range. And we'll talk about why that is. And look at our savings account now. We are dipping into it, but the rate has gone down. We're not dipping into it as fast. We're not spending it as quickly. So we haven't completely turned the ship around, but we've definitely started turning it in the right direction. And so if you look at the, the top numbers up there, the revenues and transfers in, remember, we were at 405 million, up to 425 million. Now we're at 417 to 438 million dollars. On the next slide, I'll talk about what that is. So a big change is our revenue projections. Our expenditures haven't changed much, but it's the revenue where we're really seeing a difference. Budget assumptions, I always like to share this slide because these are really important. What assumptions did we make when we built our budget? So our unduplicated pupil percentage, remember, that's the students that are either English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged, or foster youth. If you meet any one of those criteria, we only count you one time. That's why it's called unduplicated. So you might meet all three of those criteria, but we would only count you once. So the percentage of students who qualify as unduplicated pupils has gone up 1% to 2% over this three-year period. That's for two reasons. One, we're really doing a good job, job identifying those kiddos through our online registration, but we also have more families qualifying as free reduced lunch. So with that comes more funding through our LCAP. So that's one thing that changed from our assumptions at adopted budget. Cost of living adjustment did not change. That's exactly the same as it was back in June. But our funded ADA, our average daily attendance, is up 100 to 280 because of how many more TK kiddos showed up than we projected, which is great news. Also, remember I mentioned attendance is up. So that all goes right there in that funded ADA number. More kids and they're attending more frequently, that leads to more funding. And then CalSTRS rates stayed the same, but CalPERS, which is the retirement system for our classified employees, went down half a percent in '26, '27. So all those things led to a better financial picture overall and why we're dipping into our ending fund balance at a lower rate. All, all good news. So just looking into some of the detail here, our LCFF sources, so the TK add-on used to be around $3,000, where we'd get an additional $3,000 per ADA for a TK kiddo. This year, at the enacted budget, the governor increased that to $5,545 per ADA for every TK kiddo. So that's the majority of the increase in the LCFF revenue, in addition to higher enrollment, better attendance, higher unduplicated pupil percentage. The other story to tell here is the other state funding sources. You see, it's at 77.6 million. That's because of the one-time Student Support and Professional Development Discretionary Block Grant, they can never make it a short name, that we received in '25, '26. So you can see that's why other state revenue is higher in the current year than it is in the out-years because of that one-time funding. And then the last thing just I'll mention, we are, we are looking into doing Apple leases instead of outright purchases, which we've done in the past. And what that allows us to do is it allows us to spread our payments interest-free over a longer period of time, and therefore we can purchase more devices at one time with us attempting to go one-to-one at the secondary level with our Apple devices. And the refresh that we're anticipating, we're projecting to potentially go to this financing lease option. And just for bookkeeping purposes and the way government accounting works, you record when you purchase them both revenue and an expense. So that's what that 4.6 million dollars is in other financing sources. It's the recognition of this financing lease. So if we go with the lease, there's a revenue, but there's also an offsetting expenditure, no impact on the ending fund balance. Expenditures, there's not much difference here. Our certificated, classified, and employee benefits only changed overall by about half a percent from adopted budget. So those are on trend. Certificated came down, classified went up a little bit, but there's not much change overall in salaries and benefits. What you are seeing in the books and supplies for for 2026, '27, and 2027, '28, you'll see it goes up by about $5 million next year, another $6 million the following year. That's that iPad refresh that we talked about, along with math and ELA adoptions. And then in services and other operating expenditures, you can see that there's an increase in '27, '28. That's iReady. We pay for that every three years, and three years is up in 2027, '28. So that's what the increase is for there. Capital Outlay, Benton and Poroy Project, I know that was mentioned during the public comment. Just as a reminder, we are using ELOP funds to pay for that that are restricted for before, after-school, and intercession. So it's not like we could just use those funds for normal operating costs. We are using restricted funds for those purposes. And that's what's in Capital Outlay. So this is what our ending fund balance looks like. I know we, in the beginning slide, I show you $124 million, but where that is sitting tells a story. There's two of those numbers that you add together to make our savings account, which is what I showed you on the previous slide. So you see, we are dipping into our savings account, but not at an astronomical rate. We are, some of the funds that we're using are restricted one-time funds that we're spending on those restricted purposes. So, I feel like the public speaker stole a lot of my thunder. So we are filing a positive certification, which means that we are able to meet our financial obligations as they come due, which is very good news. But I do want to leave you with some final thoughts. Number one, as I mentioned in the opening of the presentation, that we build this budget based on the information as we know it today, and we have higher unduplicated pupil percentage, higher attendance rates. And we're projecting those to sustain, be sustained in the out-years. So if those attendance rates come back down, or our unduplicated pupil percentage comes back down, those are going to change those revenue numbers. We are projecting to return to the declining enrollment starting in next year, since there's no more, you know, influx of students after this year. And then while our budget does look better, I'd just like to remind everyone that we still have a $20 million deficit that we are not going to grow our way out of. We are going to have to address that at some point in time. However, we have a healthy ending fund balance, so we can take our time to redirect the ship as we have been slowly over time. What that does, what the one-time money, including our ending fund balance, does is it buys us time to go slow, to not have too much of a financial negative impact on the budget. But these are all just projections, and some of them we project in-house. Some things are completely out of our control, like the COLA. The COLA is a huge factor in how much money we receive, and it has nothing to do with anything that we control locally. So what I'm showing here is the predictions of COLA versus what actually came in. So in 2020, '21, they projected, they being the Department of Finance, projected that the '22, '23 COLA, so two years later, would be 3.26%. A year later, in '21, '22, they projected that the '22, '23 COLA was going to be 2.48%. It actually came in at 6.56%, double what they had projected a year prior. So next year, in '21, '22, they projected 3.11 COLA for '23, '24. Then the next year, they projected 5.38. What did it come in at? 8.22%. Huge fluctuation, right? So in two years consecutively, they were wrong. The Department of Finance guessed too low. But then look what happens. For '24, '25, you can see projections were high, and then it comes in at 25% of the projection from the year prior. '25, '26 came in lower than projected for four, for three years. So I show you this to tell you that we've built a budget on assumptions, and we can't assume that things will get better, as they did in '22, '23, and '23, '24, but we also can assume that things are going to get worse. We just know that we're constantly updating our budget. It's a living, breathing document that we're constantly updating because we need information, the best information we have to make good decisions. But the things constantly change. And so that's the story that I hope that you all take away from this. It's not because we guessed wrong, it's not because we didn't budget correctly. It's because things change, plans change, systems change, and some of it's even out of our control. So with that, I would like to talk about moving forward to remember, we rely heavily on how the economy in the state of California does, right? That's where we receive our funding from. Our local property taxes don't, they're about 30% of how much we actually receive in funding. All the rest comes from the state of California. And what does that mean? Well, California has its own structural deficit. For '26, '27, the Department of Finance is projecting that structural deficit to be $13 billion. Legislative Analyst Office is projecting it to be $18 billion. It'll probably be somewhere in the middle. So the state of California has its own structural deficit that it's going to try to resolve. And TVUSD needs really strong tax revenues in order for the state to be able to fully fund Prop 98, the minimum guarantee that school districts are supposed to get. And we rely heavily on a very small population of people. Remember, 1% of the population, the top 1% of earners generate 50% of personal income tax in the state of California. So 1% of the population of people, the top 1% of earners, we're relying heavily on for school district funding, which makes our funding volatile, okay? So I'd just like to remind all of us of those things so when we hear what's going on in the California economy specifically, those things have a direct impact. So be on the lookout, and Governor's budget comes out in a month. We'll see what that looks like. Hopefully, nothing too drastic will change from now until then. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. Thanks, Melissa, you tried. Any questions?
I just want to thank you for all the information and to let people know that in closed session, we roll this around in-depth and of course can't reveal all the things, but we're all taking the time to look at all of this pretty intently. So just know we take it seriously, each and every one of us, and we appreciate your work for what you've done and what you've presented. And there's some decisions ahead, and I know we'll get there.
Just having sat through some budget sessions with you, and when you look at the enormity of $400 million, and when we go through the budget, when we sit and you go through the budget, and we're talking about $50 here, and $75 here, and, and all the things, all the differences between the wants and the musts, and it all works out in the end, it's just amazing that you and your staff get it, and then we actually get the actuals are within a half a percent of what you project. You guys just do an amazing job, and we appreciate you.
And I want to, I want to echo that, and just being able to sit down with you and all of the different departments this last year, and the schools, and watch how you develop the budget and how you're looking at things. You do a great job. I mean, this is from a finance person, okay? And in addition to that, I'd like to say, because I think the auditors, they're here, right? They were here. But I had a conver, I guess they have to have a conversation with one board member, and he asked me all kinds of questions. And I had no concerns, because I know that you're on top of this. So thank you for everything you do.
Mrs. Lash, I just want to thank you and thank your business support team. I know your timeline was short on getting this done, and you guys worked over the holiday break a little bit. So thank you to you and your team.
Any other question, Dr. Kamarowski?
Oh my gosh, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation, but especially, and a lot of people won't know this if they've not seen Game of Thrones, that Jon Snow quote, winner is coming. Jon Snow's the man, saying, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lash. I move to approve a positive certification for the first interim financial report of the Temecula Valley Unified School District for the 2025, '26 fiscal year and two subsequent fiscal years. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who got it first? Lenny?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weersma?
Yes.
Kamarowski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Student vote?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. 5-26/17 regarding accounting of developer fees for fiscal year 2024-2025 pursuant to Government Code Section 66001D and 66006B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Does anyone oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Is there any public comment on number three?
No.
I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025-26/18 exempting the project at the Benton, Poroy school site from county zoning and building ordinances and regulations.
Second.
Thank you. Does any, is there any discussion? Does anyone oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Is there any public comment on number four? Then I move to approve the new classified job description, Secretary, Human Resources Development, pending CSEA 610 approval and chapter ratification. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Does anyone oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Is there any public comment on number five? I move to approve the CSEA TVUSD memorandum of understanding Insurance Reserve 11-17-2025 pending CSEA 610 approval and Chapter 538 ratification. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Does anyone oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. I move to review and sign up. Oh, is there any public comment on six?
No.
Okay. So I move to review and sign up to serve as board representatives on district standing committees.
Can I make another motion, Dr. Anderson, on that?
You want to amend that motion?
I want to postpone that.
Mr. Barham wants to postpone this?
Definitely, until next month.
Until next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
To get to the priority of the business.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Does anyone oppose Mr. Barham's motion to postpone till next, till January board meeting? Then the committee representation is postponed unanimously. Number seven, revised Board Bylaw 9124 Attorney. I move to approve the revised Board Bylaw 9124 Attorney. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Mr. Barham, do you want to explain?
I think this is yours, not mine. Both.
It's all three of us. This is the changes that you discussed with Dr. Velez.
The only thing, I think what we, what, there was a little bit of a struggle last meeting over who's going to provide the summaries. That's, I think, the only issue with this, with this, with the change in this bylaw.
Can you pull up the bylaw, Lenny? Can you be more specific?
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping that Dr. Velez is going to start speaking with our attorneys as opposed to whoever sits in the board president's seat, because that is, and I've said this over and over again, that is what is typical for a school district, that the superintendent be the one that is speaking to the attorneys. And if she is the one speaking to the attorneys, then she should be the one writing the summaries to the board. That's it.
And as a point of clarification as well, Dr. Anderson, part of this policy was so that we would get continual updates from attorneys on litigation cases, that it would come through the superintendent, so the superintendent could then send to all five board members. It's a way to ensure communication across the board, that we would get those on a regular basis.
I don't remember this saying that only the superintendent would speak to attorneys. Let me just.
No, just give the summary.
Oh.
Just the summary.
Just the summary?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is good, because it avoids any Brown Act, which is a one-way communication.
So do we want to just amend that? Was, was this reviewed by attorneys? Okay.
Can I ask a point of clarification? So obviously, we've changed things in terms of contacting the attorneys. I do think it's good everybody's briefed to be on the same page. Just clarification on whomever the board president is. I know in the past, it's had to be, there needs to be a checklist of who gives permission for that. I feel like the board president has to have some latitude. Obviously, Dr. Velez, we respect you and want you working with the attorneys. The board also employs the superintendent. So there's that tension in the sense that the board president should have some latitude to be able to reach out. So I'm not sure exactly what that's going to look like, but I want to be sure there's still flexibility, because there are districts where perhaps the superintendent has too much authority, and there are board members left wanting. And as elected officials representing the community, we just want to be sure that we can get those questions asked without too much standing in that way. There should be safeguards for budget, but what can you tell me on that?
So this policy doesn't change anything that you guys already had in place in regards to the authority of the board president in terms of their communication with an attorney or the superintendent. It doesn't change anything that has been standing for whatever we change that policy. So it doesn't change any of that, that still exists. This just ensures that we will get consistent communication from attorneys on litigation issues, and that everybody is provided that information consistently.
Great.
Good, sounds good.
Mrs. Weersma, I'm going to remind you too that with a board majority, so if three people feel that a board member needs to speak to an attorney, the board, a board majority can give someone permission as well.
Right, I did know that. And one other thought for a future meeting, perhaps, there are boards where they're given kind of minutes to make a quick phone call to an attorney, because the most important thing is that we discuss things together, but there are moments, and there are attorneys who allow for that four-minute call if you're at a conference, and you're checking a question, and you're talking to someone. So there could be a bank, that's the way they've worked it, to be a, very minimal, but to give some flexibility so that the bureaucracy's not stopping some information that may need to happen before a board meeting or a formal vote, if that makes sense.
And then my suggestion would be to, if you have an idea, to amend the policy and bring it to the board at the next meeting.
I'll throw out what you're saying, Mrs. Weersma, if I may. Mr. Huff, our general legal counsel from the past, has told me that in Placentia or Belinda, he let all five board members contact him, and many times it was free because it was under five minutes. So there was that very flexible understanding. So if you're going in that trajectory, I might agree with a bank, but then there would have to be parameters spelled out on, what does it look like monthly? How much is it? Is it text, is it phone call, is it Zoom? You know what I mean, in, as far as cost? And if our general legal, or even Tony DeMarco or DeJerk are up for that flexibility, but I'm up for that if that's the case.
Mr. Barham, your microphone's on.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm okay with the policy as written. Yeah, me too. I'm, I'm fine with it. My issue is, the board president shall not act alone. That's been my issue, so that, let me finish. So that we are safeguarding our assets because we have struggled in this area. So I have no problem with a board president talking to an attorney. I think that the superintendent should be the one primarily doing it. But if the, if the board president needs to talk to an attorney, I have no problem with that, as long as that person is not acting alone. That's all.
So I'm just, I'm going to ask you guys a question then. I think we had like six. I think we had like sixteen to twenty Brown Act complaints, complaints, litigation. I would send, I would get those emails. I would send them straight to the attorney. Usually, the email was one sentence, here's another one. Then the attorney would contact me and say, okay, what part of the meeting or what happened? And that was just to save time and money so they didn't have to watch the whole meeting. In fact, I reached out to a community member because I didn't have time to look it up and asked what part of the meeting that will, I was like, if you can help me, this will save us like six hundred dollars. And they were able to give me the portion of the meeting. That's essentially, do we want that summarized by, like, how, how do we want to move forward? I think the next board president should just, usually have one person just kind of fields, like, it's, for me, it was sort of like answering an email or, okay, now we have another complaint, here you go. And then the attorneys would summarize, they wouldn't talk to me until they came back into closed session and then they provided all of us the summary or the letter or whatever was going out. So I don't, I don't, I don't know. Is that what, Dr. Kamroski and then?
What you're describing is what I would say is that the majority of the board elects the president with flexibility. And then what you're doing is flexible for our, for us so that we don't have to do it. And, and I agree with what you have, that kind of power, that's what we voted you in for, so that you can talk to attorneys behind the scenes with Brown Act forwarding it to the superintendent, going back and forth. I, I don't mind that at all, any board president. It doesn't have to be spelled out to the letter of the law, if X, then Y, if Y, then Z. And that's what it seems like it might be going to, it's got to be flexibility.
No. And I agree with that. It's, it's just like I just said, I, I have, I don't have an issue with the board president talking to an attorney as long as that person is not acting alone. But I do want to say this, and Dr. Velez and I talked about this, with every Brown Act violation, we don't have to send it to an attorney. It's, we can make some judgment calls ourself and say, we're, we're either not going to cure and correct or we are, and we don't have to send everyone to an attorney when we get it. Isn't that, we talked about that, right? Yeah.
That might be your philosophical outlook, but I don't like to make assumptions because I didn't go to law school. And so I'm not comfortable and confident making judgment calls that are legally binding on the district, so I would disagree with you.
Okay.
I'm going to disagree too because it's been so complicated. That's why it's expensive because some of these have been in gray areas where we've had, Mark Thompson is, he, he does a lot of Brown Act, so it wasn't even DeJerk or, like, they have someone at A A L R R that does all the Brown Act for all the school districts. And it's more complicated. I, I think it's going to cost us more money if we, if we go that route. So that's my opinion, and I hope whoever the next board president is continues to send those to attorneys. Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Linne?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weersma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Student vote?
Yes.
Okay. And then I ask to pull item number one, personnel item list. Let me just pull up my emails. Okay. I wanted to pull this item just because I wanted the board to know that over the last year, I've been working with Dr. Price on his committee. And then as he's transitioned and his job description has transitioned, and I just wanted to speak of my opinion about that. So one of the first things I noticed is that, and I've said this to many people in the district, that Dr. Price, in my opinion, was overqualified and underutilized. He has two, he's, he's two master certificates, a masters of science and educational administration and a masters of athletic administration. He also has his PhD in education administration. I, I thought he was an asset in some of the recent personnel issues we were dealing with because he, besides being a former PE teacher, a former football coach, he was also a high school athletic director. So I think this position is better suited for someone of his qualifications, and I just, I didn't know he was moving into this position, but I wanted to let the district know that I'm glad that we are utilizing someone with his qualifications. So I'm glad you've recognized that he was overqualified and underutilized. And I'm just kidding. And that I just wanted to, to, to let you guys know and to let the board know that that was my experience with him. Is there any other question? Okay. So then I move to adopt consent item number one, personnel item list. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any opposed? Okay. Then the item is approved unanimously. All right. I'm going to guess we might have a couple public comments. Okay. So we have two comments on motion to discuss the reorganization of the board. Who, who do we have first?
David Solah, followed by Dr. Rugev.
Okay. Mr. Solah?
Good evening again. Here we are, forming, reforming, thunderstorming, all that stuff again. I'm up here saying the same thing every time. I feel like we go through this faster than my kids change grades. You all spend so much time trying to figure out how you want to do something that you don't remember, that it's not about any of you. To be honest, it's not even about most of us sitting out here. It's about the kids. So when we're sitting here trying to determine how are we going to reorganize, that should be the only thing that you're thinking about. It shouldn't be about who I like, who I dislike. It shouldn't be about which parents support me and which ones hate me. It shouldn't be about that at all. I've said this many times before, pressure is a privilege. You asked to be in this position. And so we hope that in this position, you'll set aside whatever it is that you have going on personally and that ego, and you'll remember that this should be always about the kids. And if any of your decisions that you make tonight are not about that, or they're influenced by anyone other than the children, you need to really take a deep look in that mirror and ask yourselves, is this the right job for me? Do I actually want to do this? Is this about the kids or is it about me? I'll tell you what. No, please, please. This is not that time. My kids have grown in this district. They have a life that I did not have to live because of this district. That's all I care about. So I don't even care about any of the slights, any of the insults, any of the failed emails that don't get returned or don't get responded to. I don't care about any of that right now, and neither should any of you. It should only be about the kids. Thank you.
Dr. Rugev?
This moment is bigger than procedure. It's about leadership, identity, and the truth a person tells themselves when they look in the mirror. Dr. Anderson, I speak specifically to you now. As watching you lately, I still believe you want to do the right thing. Every leader comes into office on the strength of who they promised they were, the community, what the community believed and placed single choice can either restore the trust or shatter it. There is a harsh reality we all understand. Some people on this board have shown us again and again and again their moral, moral character. We all watched it happen. They attempted to publicly humiliate you on these days. And who stepped, who stopped it? Who stepped in when others didn't? These two, two heroes of yours, God sent them to your rescue to defend your dignity when the others tried to strip it away. Don't forget that. That kind of loyalty is rare. That kind of loyalty deserves to be remembered. Moments like that reveal character in actions, in the fruit you bear, as Jesus said. And this vote is another such moment to reveal the fruits you bear. Strong leaders do not hand authority to the same people who have already shown they are willing to weaponize it against their colleagues. Leadership is also the ability to look back, back at a decision and correct it if needed. You did that, Dr. Anderson, twice. Once with the Islamic Networks Group and once with this RUHS agenda item that keeps on appearing and reappearing due to Mr. Barham's trials to contaminate our school with vile wokeism. Tonight's vote is about choosing the kind of leadership that protects our kids and aligns with the values promised to the community, promised to our kids. Your choice tonight will become a part of your legacy, and legacies once written cannot be rewritten. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to ask the board for a favor. I asked to postpone my president's minutes and tied into the reorganization. I wanted to talk about an event I was able to attend. Can I have my three minutes? Okay. Just bear with me, everyone. Could you pull that picture up too? So this week, I was invited by members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to travel to Riverside and attend the Light the World Giving Machine ribbon-cutting ceremony. And I had the honor to be here with the mayor of Wildamar and also with our assemblywoman, Natasha Johnson. So the, I, I wanted to point out, there were, there were actually several Republican and Democrat people that went and supported the members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. There's a few things I want to say about that. In Temecula and Murrieta, I don't know if people know, that this area has the highest number per capita of Mormons in the state of California. And I'm bringing this up because I usually don't give comment, I don't speak, but I want to talk about religious persecution and that I think that some of what has gone on this year has been based on religious persecution and my association with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Some of the most successful people in our community happen to be doctors, I mean, ear, nose, and throat surgeons, urologists, orthodontists, dentists, pediatricians. They represent our community, and a lot of you have friends and neighbors that you probably don't realize belong to the LDS church. And so I wanted to take a minute and defend those people because I have been told several times that some of the persecution that I have received has been due to my affiliation with members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And I hope that as a board, I don't believe board members were involved in that, but I hope that as a board, we can set an example for better religious tolerance moving forward. Like at the Light the World event where I saw people cross party lines and come together to support the, the church. And also, there are two kiosks, kiosks at Tyler Mall where for Christmas, Path of Life and many local Riverside nonprofits, like Meals on Wheels. There's even the American Red Cross, you can buy a goat for a third world country. So if you're in, shopping up in Tyler Mall, it's by the Macy's, and I challenge everyone to light the world. I'm going to bring back the topic of light the world later when we have these discussions regarding who should be the next board member, but thank you for letting me take time that was supposed to come before the public speakers. Next is the motion to discuss. I move to discuss the reorganization of the board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. So the discussion is, I want to ask the board, how do we want to go about this tonight? And Dr. Woods was going to be here and lead this part, so I'm going to look to. As a board, I, I threw out a thousand ideas because when I, when we looked at our bylaws, they're not very specific. And Dr. Woods had the idea of giving everyone an opportunity to nominate someone. Do we want to do that? Do we, we go down the list alphabetically and say, like, I'm Anderson, so I, do I have someone I want to nominate? Is there a second? Or do we want to just jump into it like we have in times past? We, we even have a bucket ready if we want to draw names out of a bucket and let people take turns nominating someone. I want the board to decide before we get into the nitty-gritty how we should approach this. Dr. Kamroski?
Jump in, get her done. Whoever wants to mic up and motion second, that's my thought.
But, okay, so what if two people scream in the microphone at the same time? Do I pick?
No. I say we go through, for the bucket. I think that's fair and random, that with each voting round, we choose, what, is it, is it names or is it numbers?
So let me explain this because this was something that Dr. Anderson worked with Dr. Woods on. So we do have a bucket. In the bucket are, is index cards that are the exact same size. They are folded in the exact same way. And on each of those is a number, which is the number of your trustee area and the name of that individual in the trustee area. So, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Anna Sebar. It is just the name. We did change it. And so part of the discussion that happened was we would have a non, nobody up here, somebody neutral who would come up and choose, and that would be the first person who took a vote. That is an option for the board to consider because I know that is something that Dr. Anderson spoke with Dr. Woods about, but it is at the pleasure of the board, however the board consensus is.
I think we're elected officials, and I think that somebody that wants to nominate somebody else should just mic up. That's my opinion. I don't want to throw votes to chance in a bucket.
You're not.
No, we, wait, wait, wait. Women, there's some confusion.
I do understand, and I don't even want to throw it to chance to who we talk about first. If you want to motion for somebody, just mic it up. For grown men and women, we don't need to play bucket.
I will. Okay. Mr. Barham, what would you like to?
I would like to go with the bucket. I think it's fair. Last time was a free-for-all, and, you know, we're, we're, I think we're going to struggle a little bit in terms of who we're going to elect, and I think it's, as we go through each voting round, that we start with Schwartz, and he puts his hand in the bucket, and if he chooses me first, I get the first nomination.
No, that's not how it works.
Okay. Explain then, I'm sorry.
Dr. Velez, rather than have people shout into the microphone, like, it's not fair if like, two people shout like, I nominate this person.
Yeah.
How do we decide who got, who was fairly nominated first?
I agree.
Dr. Velez will pick a name, and she will say, I, this isn't, I don't see who it's a, she will say, Joe Schmo, do you have anyone you want to nominate for president? And then Joe Schmo can say?
It's kind of not fair.
Yes or no?
Because I could go by Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry, not Joe Schmo.
Just saying, man.
John Smith. So we'll do John Smith. Do you have someone? And then that allows that person a chance to nominate and to get a second.
Yeah, that's, I like that idea.
And here, here's why I want to tell people that I like this idea. There have been, people are assuming that I may be a deciding vote, and I really want to hear from all board members. If I'm not the deciding vote, my prayers are answered, and you guys decide without my input, and I will be happy to support whoever is up here. If I'm the deciding vote, this has been a really hard week for me, and I want to hear from the board. And most likely, this, if, we've also talked about several rounds, to make it fair, I would probably vote no on everyone so that I can hear everyone's arguments fairly. If I'm just, I'm being presumptuous and maybe I'm not the deciding vote. Like I said, that would be my best-case scenarios that I'm not, but if I am, I just want to hear from all the board members. So can we get consensus on the bucket? Can you raise your hand if you want to do the bucket? Okay. So we're going to do the bucket. Okay. So, so can we do two minutes? Okay. So I just want to clarify why we, we have a recess, that this is not, this, this bucket is not picking. is not picking anyone, we're just taking turns nominating, and it's rand, just in case anyone's confused again. All right, board. We have seventeen comments, that's fifty-one minutes. I suggest we do two minutes per person. That was on a different item, and that's your first warning, please don't interrupt me. I suggest two minutes, two minutes. We've got three people that say two minutes. So she's been warned.
Okay, first speaker is Pastor Drew, followed by Caroline Hoffman.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come forward and speak with you. Tonight, we've heard a lot of things, and the most important voices that we heard spoke at the beginning of this meeting. I came up here to kind of share my thoughts of what should be done, but I'm the adult. My opinion doesn't matter. David, I'm still in your words, I'm sorry. The words that matter are the kids that came forward, the brave kids in this district that came forward to speak. If I was to even try to match what they shared, it would compare. It would just be pale in comparison. I don't want to talk to you about who to vote for, I want to talk to you about the qualities of the person you shouldn't vote for, because I've seen so much happen this year, and we have to weigh it all into account, because what happens at this board can happen to the kids from the leader that takes over it. I would prefer we not have a board president that would single out one middle-school child because they're transgender. I would prefer not to have a board president that would harass another board member to the extent that they can't stay through the meetings. I would prefer those things because what happens here is passed down to the kids that you are supposed to be serving. You are the example. So, if I was to say who I wanted to vote, I would agree with the kids. Please vote for Steve Schwartz. But I don't want you to think about it that way. What example do you want the kids to have? Who is the example that's going to set things straight? The one that sets other people aside because Jesus Christ went for the outcast? He did not push the outcast further. And that's what I want you to remember.
Next up is Caroline Hoffman, followed by LeAnn Charlton.
You said me, right, Caroline? I never described Joe as a self-aggrandizing, attention-seeking, performative grand center who talks down to women with a bargain and authority voice. He thinks makes him sound important, all while confidently spouting fact-free nonsense like he's the lone genius in every room. Who am I kidding? Of course I would, I love that about myself. If you think I'm too much, go find less. I'm self-aware, emotionally attuned, which basically means my feelings show up on time to work and aren't afraid to speak. Jen, this is why I genuinely admire your composure up there. Your emotions show, sure, but mine don't show. They announce themselves with neon lights and fog. And I'll be honest, I get a little thrill coming up here and seeing Joe making eye con, avoiding making eye contact because he knows I'm coming out to call him out. But lately, there seems to be less emotionally reactive Joe, dare I say timid? Perhaps he's doing or taking something to level out that temper. If so, truly good for you, mental health is important. But it did make me wonder if this gentler Joe just might be what happens when you no longer get to sit in the president's chair. I mean, I could bring up the recall showing he's not universally adored, but since he insists that the recall failed, I'll just say it plainly, taking him out of the seat of power has tamed him a little, right, Melinda? Smitch? Now, Jen, here's where I actually feel bad for you. I genuinely feel like you don't have real friends who have lovingly pulled you aside to say, "Hey, maybe don't go all in on supporting the guy who would never, ever support you back. Joe sees you as a tool, not a teammate. Look at the committees you're grinding in the ones he obsesses over. He can't be bothered to support your drug awareness one." Scrolling issues. And honestly, I wish Melinda and you would stop going after each other, because the two of you supported each other instead of protecting his ego. This board would be unstoppable and an...
LeAnn Charlton, followed by Christine Massa. LeAnn Charlton, followed by Christine Massa.
Good evening. I am a parent in the district. I live in the district. I have a son that goes to Chaparral in their ATP program, and I'd like to say that this, Stephen is the only person who should be sitting in that president's chair. There is no chaos, no agenda, other than the children and fiscal responsibility. To be really honest with you, Melinda, you're right, it's probably going to come down to you. And unfortunately, that's a decision you're going to have to live with up there, but I will say, that man sat there and he failed miserably already. He had his shot. He was recalled. Okay, do you know how hard it is to recall an elected official? Virtually impossible, but it was done. Then he used a loophole to sit back into that seat.
Pause her time. I'm going to ask everyone, we've got fifteen more people to go, and I'm going to ask you to respect the speaker and be quiet. Thank you.
Okay. So essentially, it should be an easy decision, actually the easiest decision you make this year. Okay? It really is about the kids. You weren't here earlier when those students stood up and spoke forcefully about what is going on up here. Those are the people, those kids are the only thing that matters. Please respect their decisions, please listen to them, because a lot of times I feel, over these past three years, that this board changed, it goes in one ear and out the other. I don't know that anyone's hearing us, but hear the kids. It should be an easy decision, and if it's not, there's seriously something wrong. Stephen, you really are someone who's deserving, okay? Thank you.
Christine Massa, followed by Jennifer San Nicholas.
Hello, board. As you know, actual TVUSD parent of three and active TVUSD volunteer, and I've been watching the board meetings since Adam Skumowitz was president, and that was about the last time I saw a really well-run meeting, with the exception of some recent ones run by trustee Barham, including today. However, the most invested trustee to the business of the district is Steve Schwartz, and I support Steve for president, sure that's no surprise to anyone. Now, we've seen what a brief Weirzner presidency looked like, marked by a willful disregard for parliamentary procedure to advance her own personal agenda, and more than $25,000 in legal fees in a two-month period in support of her vanity project that violated state law. No, thank you. And we lived through nearly two years of a Komrosky presidency from which the district is still dealing with ramifications. A disastrous CRT resolution on day one, a special community meeting months later at a cost of at least $15,000 to discuss CRT that made national news for its order of disruption and chaos. Then there's the illegal policies banning flags. He's had demand letters served on him for slandering parents from the dais. Parents! We've seen a $75,000 lawsuit the district had to pay for his violating the First Amendment rights of meeting participants, and the district is still dealing with the ramifications of CRT, which will end up costing millions before it's settled. How much more money can we afford to chase after his illegal behavior in the face of budget shortfalls that are already here? He won't even advance a bond measure to help raise money for the district. He has no incentive to improve our district academically. He's contributed nothing to TVUSD, only subtracted from it, and we have no reason to expect that a second presidency would be any different. And this is why it's time for Schwartz's presidency, multiple decades in public education, active in all the trustee areas, not just his own. Let's get back to the business of TVUSD.
Jennifer San Nicholas, followed by Amarissa Cubana. Jennifer San Nicholas, followed by Amarissa Cubana.
Good evening. My concern tonight isn't necessarily who takes the gavel and becomes president next year, though my preference would be Mr. Schwartz or Mr. Barham. No, my concern is that Dr. Komrosky does not ever sit in the president's seat ever again, and let me tell you why. He clearly does not like women. We have all witnessed the way he has treated the women on this dais, from Mrs. Barkley to Dr. Anderson, even Mrs. Weirzner from time to time. He is cruel to mothers who come here to speak and to female staff members. We saw the way he reacted to Dr. McClay, and I do not wish to see the treatment extend to the current cabinet and their support staff. I know I cannot speak to the audience from the podium, but if I could, I would ask for a show of hands how many women have been silenced by Dr. Komrosky in some way. Has he sent you an email saying he will no longer communicate with you? Has he called you names from the dais? Has he thrown you out, cut off your public comment? He does not represent all students. Dr. Komrosky will only represent white, cisgendered, straight evangelical Christian students, and technically even then, he will only represent their parents, not the students themselves. Dr. Komrosky demagogues staff members and will lower morale as he did the first time he held the presidency. He referred to teachers as indoctrinators and groomers without any proof or specific examples. He was caught on mic saying these very things at fundraisers and while giving speeches around town. Voting for him sends the message to the amazing educators in this district that you do not respect them or appreciate them. Dr. Komrosky delegates the work of the board to attorneys. The obvious problem with this is the money he is bleeding from the district. The issue that is often overlooked is that he is not doing the work he was elected to do because he has the attorneys doing it. If he is president again, he will not only waste taxpayer money, but he will render the board obsolete, because what is the point in having a board of trustees if the attorneys are going to do everything for you? The five of you were elected to craft policy in conjunction with the cabinet, not the attorneys. You are a governing board, not a managing board, and the attorneys are there to provide consult, not policy. Sadly, I only have a few minutes and limited equipment at my disposal because I would have gladly prepared a multimedia presentation of film...
Amarissa Cubana, followed by Jack Marston.
Hello. Dr. Anderson, I'm speaking with respect and with a heart for what is right. This vote is a moment for you to stand firmly in the values you shared with our community when you ran: truth, integrity, transparency, and parental rights. People supported you because you spoke as a conservative with conviction, and many still believe in that version of you. I want to remind you that God calls us to keep our word and walk in truth, even when the political pressure feels overwhelming. This vote is your opportunity to realign with the promises you made and to stand openly for the principles you campaigned on. And the truth is simple: if you are a conservative, there is only one clear vote, the conservative. Dr. K has been consistent, steady, and fully aligned with the values that you publicly said you believed in. Supporting him is supporting the direction you told voters you would champion. I pray that God gives you clarity, courage, and peace as you make this decision. Please take on this responsibility and use your vote wisely. Your vote now can restore trust, honor your commitments, and set a strong path forward for our district. Thank you.
Jack Marston, followed by Kristi McClure.
Hello. Hello, good evening, school board. I just want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. This is a definitive moment for this board. Melinda, you respectfully ran on conservative values, and your supporters who got you in your position count on you. I'll just leave you with this, this is your opportunity to leave a legacy and choose
Hi. In any workplace, when someone is considered for a promotion, the supervisor looks at their performance, how well they've done the job, followed policies and procedures, and if they've caused major problems or financial losses, that person doesn't get promoted. It's that simple. The only difference here is that in government, the voters are the supervisors, and this performance review unfortunately happens in public, not behind closed doors. When we look at Komrosky's record, the performance speaks for itself. This is not personal. Under his leadership, the district has wasted hundreds of thousands of dollars on avoidable legal fees and other unnecessary costs, for example, firing a superintendent without cause. This financial mismanagement wasn't the result of forces outside of his control, they were the direct result of his actions: violating the Brown Act, violating First Amendment rights, ignoring cease-and-desist letter from an attorney and continuing the behavior costing $60,000, and money spent on wasteful endeavors that don't benefit students. This behavior isn't in the past. Recently, Dr. Komrosky was told by the attorney he could not postpone two agenda items indefinitely. Five minutes later, Dr. Anderson arrives, makes the same motion, not knowing what legal counsel had just said. Komrosky immediately seconded the motion, not telling her what DeMarco had just explained to them. When legal counsel advises a trustee to follow the law and the trustee willfully disregards it repeatedly, this is reckless governance. This has already cost taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars and likely millions. If this were a private company, no supervisor would promote someone with a track record of rule violations, legal liability, and costly mistakes. As a community, we're simply saying we cannot afford another Komrosky presidency. A vote for Dr. Komrosky for board president is sentencing this district to financial ruin, and you all, all of you, will be held accountable for that.
Jack Guerrero, followed by Bob Quaid.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to address the board on this occasion. My name is Jack Guerrero. I'm a member of the board's advisory committee, a proud member of that committee. I want to share at the very outset that we are working collaboratively on some very substantial and consequential topics for this board, and I'm very proud of that working relationship, which I hope transcends or cascades to this board's working relationship. Today, I'm here to make a very humble recommendation so that this board can appoint Dr. Komrosky to the leadership position. This is based exclusively entirely on my working relationship with Dr. Komrosky. It is not a reflection on any board member. Everyone here is competent enough, I think, to step up to the plate and serve honorably, but my relationship with Dr. Komrosky is meaningful enough to be a basis for my recommendation. He appointed me to the advisory committee. He did so with support. He has been... He has been respectful, even deferential, to my independence on that advisory committee. Never once has he pushed an agenda or influenced my participation on the board or on the committee. On the contrary, he has encouraged me to be effective in my role, to be thorough, to be objective, and I think that that speaks importantly to his leadership attributes. I also think that Dr. Komrosky's values are aligned with this community's values. He supports parental rights. He supports quality education for our children, and he supports fiscal discipline. These are three pillars that I believe will be the most important as we go into 2026, and I really want those values to be represented on this board with strong leadership. I appreciate this board's consideration. Thank you for your time.
Bob Quaid followed by Janey Handany. I'm sorry if I pronounce that wrong.
I think Bob Quaid had to leave.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Jan, and this is my second time. And I'm a little bit confused because I don't know how this is supposed to go, but I would think that children's voices or students that stand up might resonate because unlike you guys, this is not my job, volunteer or not. I don't get paid. I don't show up. So I don't get, if someone, you know, fooled me once, shame on you. Fooled me twice, shame on me. What are you guys thinking? Have I just understood this? You just heard Nicole tell us the most brilliant thing about turning around a ship. Are you guys clueless? Are you guys, can you hear yourselves? This is humiliating. This guy cost you guys everything. What are you turning around? His losses, and he gets another option? Are we in business? Do we know anything about the way the world works? You screw up, you're gone. You don't get to come back and clap if you've got morals. You guys should look at your morals. How do you even, just justify this? It makes no sense. He failed. Let's move on and try another approach. This is ridiculous. It's shame on you. Listen to the children. Forget me. I'm an old person who just lives here. But you guys are on the school board. Hello? School, children? It's not complicated. Do the damn right thing.
Josh Shirling. Josh Shirling followed by Daniel Molina.
I would ask just a couple of questions about what is the criteria for selecting the board president? My first criterion has been the thing that got me off the couch and got me here is lawyers and how often we have to use them. I would look at the five of you and ask, who has gotten sued the least? The second half of that question would be, who has consistently made the children the It's not a great picking between the five of you. It's like five raccoons all trying to drive one car. It's not great. But I do believe the most sound person here is Steve. We're looking at a tremendous unilateral power of a board president, and Dr. Komrosky, this is not meant to be like an insult, but I believe that if you were the board president, the public would attempt another recall. Not that we, I mean, yes, you got elected again, and I respect that we have conservatives in the community that voted for you. And I'm happy to have your voice along with Mrs. Weirzma. I'm happy to have conservative voices as a part of our panel of five. That's great. But I think if the board was led by you, I think it would be leading us to a lot of circus coming back. So I respect you. I appreciate you as a board member. I don't think you're a good fit to be the president, though. So thank you for your time and your service. Dr. Anderson, I'm sorry that this position has not been easy on you. Leadership is hard. I think David mentioned that. So thank you for holding the reins. I think we have gotten sued a lot less because of you, and I thank you for that.
Daniel Molina followed by David Hatch.
I think we need to do a better job at understanding what exactly we're doing here. Not voting in Dr. Komrosky doesn't get him off the board, doesn't change his vote, doesn't change his influence. What we have seen through this last leadership of our school board has been a nightmare up here. Everybody knows that. And all of this hate for Dr. Komrosky is now coming back, and everybody wants to overlook back and go back to the previous school board and the conduct there. So let's talk about what the president's job is. The president's job is to practice good decorum, to have good leadership, to establish good control. Dr. Anderson, I think your intentions were pure and good. I think you tried your best. But I want you to just consider what it would be like if you had an army of an entire pack ready to combat you when you took that seat, because that's exactly what Dr. K experienced. And what we actually saw here over these last couple of months has given me more respect for Dr. K's leadership in that position, and that's the truth. I want to, I want to talk about some disingenuous comments that have been made. There were three students that came up here and spoke. Good for them. I'm proud of those students. They should be able to speak to their opinion. But for adults to come up here and use that to leverage as if they represent the entire student base in our community is disgusting and disingenuous. For people to come up here and bash Dr. K, they were part of the recall, and they talk about the recall, but not the reelection is disgusting and disingenuous. If you have an opinion about Dr. K, but you don't live in his district, too bad. If you have a negative opinion about Dr. K and you didn't vote for him, guess what? Too bad. He's sitting in the seat. I think we've seen his leadership, and also Jen Weirzma. We've seen Jen Weirzma's leadership in the seat. But I'll tell you, this has been a nightmare, and more than anything, I'm just happy to see a new leader come up. Dr. K, I'm rooting for you. Thank you.
David Hatch followed by Lindsay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is David Hatch. I want to speak to the qualities that I think should be exhibited in a president. I moved here in 2022. All I've witnessed since I've been here is complete chaos at this board. I've never cared about a school board in my entire life, and now I know everyone's school board, everyone's name. I know the attorneys. I know way too much about this damn school board. A board president should promote trust, follow the law, model civility, and represent the entire community. They can have their own opinion, but they represent the entire community. Based on publicly documented events, our district experienced the opposite under Mr. Komrosky's leadership. During his tenure, the district was repeatedly pulled into legal and constitutional challenges, sued over curriculum bans, over gender policies, over free speech concerns. These cases questioned our district's compliance with state requirements. None of this improved student academics. If you ran on academic excellence, nothing you've done since I've been here, since your tenure, has improved academic excellence. That is what's frustrating. I'm sorry to be up here, and I'm sorry if you feel attacked. I'm very frustrated right now. Public comments made by Mr. Komrosky also drew widespread concern, calling Harvey Milk a pedophile, and then going on a TV show with Matt Gaetz. That is highly hypocritical. I'm sorry, but it is. Regardless of anyone's politics, those moments, we can trust in the position of the board president. Please consider other alternatives. Thank you.
Lindsay followed by Jack Callahan. Lindsay followed by Jack Callahan.
I just want to say really quick that you can have same values, but just because you have similar values as one another, it doesn't mean that you execute those values the same way. You execute them differently, and that's kind of what I have an issue with and why I chose to speak on this super last minute. If there was any question I had about whether Joe Komrosky had any qualifications to lead as board president, what happened earlier tonight in regard to the MOU discussion answered that for me. In a pure act of retribution toward another school board member, you voted no to not even wanting to hear from a well-respected staff member about the benefits of a program that could truly save the lives of children and have a success rate of 100%. Let me be very clear: I'm speaking directly to the lack of qualifications and pure recklessness by both Ms. Anderson and Dr. Komrosky tonight. Neither of you should ever be in a position of leadership going forward. And let's also clear another misconception: this is not conservative versus Democrat. This is bipartisan. Since the word "conservative" is being misused, let's define it correctly. A conservative person tends to prefer predictability over risk, make careful, cautious decisions, be slower to adopt new trends or ideas prioritizing stability. Financially, a conservative approach means choosing lower-risk options, seeking steady, reliable outcomes, avoiding unnecessary risk. Nothing that happened tonight fits that definition. In fact, what you displayed tonight, please be quiet, especially Joe Komrosky, was the opposite of conservatism. It was impulsive, erratic, and rooted in personal grievances rather than student welfare. And let's be very clear about what your vote actually did. You denied students access to a free voluntary service that even includes faith-based counselors for families who want that support. This program meets students and parents exactly where they are academically, emotionally, and spiritually, and has a proven track record of keeping kids safe, sober, and alive. It's beyond reckless. It's beyond irresponsible. And if your attorney is allegedly advised against this, then those attorneys should be fired immediately.
Jack Callahan followed by Sarah Bell.
All right. Good evening, board members. Pick it up? Cool. Thank you. My name is Jack Callahan. You may or may not remember me from the last meeting where I expressed my sincere disappointment against all of you. While I did not pick out anybody in particular, this board has disappointed the student body before, and it continues to. I hope that this will change, and that's why I'm going to speak my mind on who I want to be president and who I think should not be given that chance again. I respect you, Dr. Komrosky, very much. I understand that you were board president at one point, and I understand you were reelected by members of your trustee area. But at the same time, I would like to speak to you directly. I also understand that in the time that you were president, we did have very many shortcomings. And continuing forth, I have seen nothing but debate against policies that will help students like myself today. Sorry. Today, with the UHS situation, while I do not deny that there are different values that go into that, and I understand the concern around transgender students or gender-affirming care, at the same time, that's not what that's about. And I believe that y'all are disregarding the actual well-being of the student. I believe that Mr. Steve Schwartz should be the next board president, as he has time and time again put the student first compared to Dr. Komrosky, who, again, very high respect for you. You are, you have been a longtime board member. You have denied opportunities for students that I know personally. I have friends who have substance abuse issues, who do not get that service, and who are continuing to fall deeper and deeper into that hole. And I just don't see a way that when you come back onto the board as president, that you will serve us properly if you're not willing to accept a program that regardless of transgender rights...
Time. Thank you. Sarah Bell followed by Greg Langworthy.
Okay. Good evening, board members. I'm speaking to you as a local community member and a parent of TVUSD students. I think when you're listening to the speakers, it is important to know who is speaking from the community and who has students at these schools that we serve. Tonight's decision on board president is the most important action you will make for the stability and direction of our district. We urgently need a leadership that is focused on students. I think that's redundant tonight. We need to be committed to operating within the law. One way to keep the focus on students and understand the population you serve is site visits. Okay? Let's look at who does regular site visits and is also welcomed and respected on our campuses, and think about that for who's going to be board president. I believe, while I've absolutely shared that you have my support, Dr. Anderson, I do believe it's time to elect a board president that has not previously been a board president. And that includes Mrs. Weirzma, who had the opportunity during the, after the recall. In Dr. Anderson's absence, Mr. Barham has modeled what leadership can look like. He ran meetings in a way that even Mrs. Weirzma herself said that he was a different person when serving as acting board president. He has a professional background in K-12 public education, and that's who TVUSD serves: public education. I also want to encourage you to nominate or vote for Mr. Schwartz. He is the most experienced board member here. He was here before the last three years of chaos. I beg you to choose Mr. Schwartz or Mr. Barham to return the focus of the board to our students. And in addition to the students and education, our property values are also depending on your decision tonight.
Greg Langworthy followed by David Sola.
So I'm going to propose a little different team: the captain and the first mate. Joseph, I think, should be the president because of his moral focus on the issue which I think faces our school and all many schools: boys in their girls' restroom, girls and, or boys and girls' sports. Why do I say that? Well, we're one nation under God. God created male and female. We are to train kids the way they should go, not give them the impression that they could change genders, which I think is a position Joseph is very strong on. Steve also is very strong on the same principle: we are created in the image of God. Steve treats everybody that way. He treats people as though they are created by God. That's a great strength that he has. That's a strength that Joseph needs. So they're two different people, different gifts, complementary. So that's really what I would recommend, is a team. The first, the captain and the first mate. So that is my impression here, and appreciate that Melinda somehow has brought these guys together. Certainly was not expected, you know, when you guys started years ago. But you're to be commended. Melinda, you're to be commended. But anyway, that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker, David Sola.
Good evening again. I've come up here many times and have stayed away from most of the drama. I've tried to come up here and talk about real issues, real things that my kids are experiencing and their friends are experiencing. And as a parent who really cares about these things, I've reached out to you all, all of you. One of you have always responded. Two of you have never responded. And it doesn't matter if I lost that election because I'm still showing up. Dr. Komrosky, when you lost the recall, congratulations. I hope I can do whatever I can, and I'm going to own something right now. I didn't realize how bad your fans were going to come after me just because I disagreed with how you were going to go about some things, and I took some of that out on you. And it wasn't until Danny Molina told me those people are not his fault that I stood back and I said, "Well, then, why doesn't he tell them to stop?" And I think that I do respect that you stand firm in your beliefs and that you're willing to fight for them, but as a parent that still has kids here, when you don't, I feel really disrespected that you won't even answer me when I come up here with real problems. I know that Mr. Schwartz has responded to every single question I've ever asked. I know that Dr. Anderson has attempted to respond to me, and I know that Mr. Barham frequently responds to whatever questions I ask, but you won't even talk to me. That's not leadership, and that's not... That's not leadership, and that's not strength. That's weak. We don't need a weak leader right now. Melinda, you asked me a year ago to meet with you because you thought I could win. I'm already winning. I want my kids to win. And I need you to do the right thing tonight. We need you to do the right thing tonight.
Time.
I can't see who the loud clapper is, but the person that's doing the loud clap, just when the speakers are speaking, if you support them, don't interrupt them. I'm going to turn. Thank you, everyone. I agree with a lot of people here in this room. I'm going to now turn the meeting over to Dr... Oh, wait, wait. I think now would be a more appropriate time to have the student comment. I don't, and you have prepared that? Okay. So I'd like to give Melissa a chance to speak.
Okay. So I'm actively applying to college right now. And when you apply to college, you receive an acceptance letter based on how great your past performance is and how likely you are to be successful in the future. So I believe it's important to treat this less like a political debate and more with a clear rubric. Let me explain. The California School Boards Association, or the CSBA, provides professional governance standards for its trustees. So as they state, in order to govern effectively, individual trustees must work with each other and the superintendent to ensure that a high-quality education is provided to each student. This means that trustees should keep student learning and achievement as the primary focus, respect and collaborate with colleagues, staff, and the community, maintain professionalism, confidentiality, and appropriate demeanor, participate actively in professional development, and understand the distinction between board and staff responsibilities. Before someone can become president, they must first demonstrate that they are a strong trustee. I encourage all of us to ask, does this trustee consistently prioritize students? Do they engage respectfully in discussion? Do they collaborate with the team rather than focus on personal agendas? Do they model professionalism and accountability in every interaction? Once we evaluate trustees through this lens, we can then consider the additional qualities a president must demonstrate. CSBA notes that the board president is responsible for managing meetings effectively, coordinating agendas with staff, and providing leadership both at the dais and in the community. Beyond these duties, an effective president inspires trust, fosters collaboration, builds the capacity of others, models access for all students, and maintains focus on long-term goals rather than short-term gains. In my time on this board, I have observed these qualities closely. While I have deep respect for every trustee, when evaluated against this professional rubric, I believe Mr. Schwartz demonstrates the focus, professionalism, and leadership necessary to serve successfully as board president. I want to be clear that I have not shared this opinion with any board members previously, nor have I told any trustee that I would endorse them. This is my professional opinion, based on my experience as the district's first student board member. I hope everyone can respect this the same way I've respected all other opinions. Your opinion may differ from mine, and I hope it does because different opinions help us all learn from each other. But I would urge that your final conclusion is informed by some of the guidelines and questions I have posed today. This decision is not about politics, ideology, or promises about the future. It's about demonstrated maturity, judgment, and commitment, which are qualities that ensure our board can operate effectively and remain focused on what matters most, the students that we serve. Thank you.
Now I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Velez.
Okay. So now we will begin with the election of the president. We did have consensus to use the bucket in terms of who would make the first motion. I would like to remind the audience, the discussion and debate that will happen between all these board members is essentially extremely important for this district. So as Dr. Anderson has indicated, as there is discussion and motions being made, we ask that you please respect the conversations that are happening. We understand there's a lot of emotion in the room. We just ask for your cooperation in terms of allowing the board to debate each and every motion that happens. So with that said, I am not going to draw the name. I'm actually going to have Mr. Pastor come up. Mr. Pastor, can you please come up?
No pressure.
No pressure.
Grab one and hand it to me. Okay. So the first motion will be made by Mr. Barham.
So you will also see a level of formality as I read through this, as I would like to keep this process very transparent. So knowing Mr. Barham has the first motion, do I have a motion to elect the governing board president for the 12-month period commencing December 4th, 2005?
Moved.
It's Mr. Barham.
Moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And now we can have discussion. Mr. Barham?
Okay. So I can make my nomination now?
Yeah, we need his motion.
Yeah. So I need, I can make my nomination?
Correct.
Okay. So I nominate Steve Schwartz to be the president of this board. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Mr. Schwartz, you second?
Yes.
And now discussion.
So I hear a lot of people coming up here talking about, three minutes, right? Conservatism. Conservativism. So first of all, I want to say, Steve is for the kids. We go to site visits. The kids love Steve. Steve loves the kids. The teachers love Steve. Steve loves the teachers. The admin loves Steve. Steve loves the admin. How can I help you? I mean, he's just, he's invested in education. That's the most important thing, is that he's invested in the educational success of our students. That's number one. But I want to remind everybody of some of the things that Steve voted for this year. He voted for AB 89 to save girls' sports. He voted for every single parental notification policy except for one. He's able to cross over and be common sense oriented. And that's what I love about Steve. And Steve and I don't agree on other things, but because we are centered on educational, on the educational success of the kids, which is number one, that's where we relate. And it's been an honor to work with Steve. I didn't know what it would be like coming on this board and dealing with Steve. But he's, he's a straight shooter. He's a good guy. And he is about treating people with respect, all people. He's about representing all students. And he deserves to be the president of this board. That's all.
I'd just like to say a few words. I want to remind people that school boards are nonpartisan. I don't care what your political views are. School boards are nonreligious. You're welcome to your religious practice. We don't have religion in schools because of the multiplicity of faiths that exist in our schools. We don't want anyone to feel that they are not part of what goes on. So what about me? What do you know about me? Well, I am the most experienced educator on this board. I was a teacher in New York City for 35 years in elementary and middle schools. I have a Bachelor of Arts, a Master of Science in Education, and an Advanced Certificate in Supervision and Administration. I hold New York City and New York State licenses as a teacher and a principal. 35 years in elementary and middle school experience in New York City as a teacher, an administrator, a staff developer, what's here is called the TOSA, and as a coach, golf, softball, whatever was needed. When I moved to California in 2004, I worked for five years at MSJC. I am the longest-serving TVUSD member. I was reelected in 2024. I was an SCBS, CS, sorry, CSBA delegate, and I am being nominated to be a delegate again. I'm a member of the CSBA Legislative Committee. I was just reappointed by the president of CSBA to be on that committee. Here in Temecula, I have been on the grading committee, the budget committee, superintendent student council. I am working with Dr. Bar, with Mr. Barham and Mrs. Dais and Dr. Velez on developing a dual immersion language program here in the district. I'm also a member of the retirement committee. I'm on the board advisory committee. I'm on the DLEC committee. I'm on the math bridges committee. And what do I stand for? I repeat my three S's. Students, schools, and saving money. I'm not interested in anything else. I'm not interested in your politics. I'm not interested in who you voted for, what you voted for. I am here for kids. Those young men know me, and they came up to speak for me, not because I asked them. They came up to speak for me because they know me and what I do for the kids. And that's why I think I deserve to be the president of the school board.
Yeah. I'm going to remind everyone that I committed to vote no on everybody to give the rest of the board a chance and not have me be the deciding vote. So please don't gasp when I vote no on everyone. I want to tell everyone that I agree with Mr. Barham and Mr. Schwartz is an outstanding person. More outstanding than Mr. Schwartz is actually his wife, Sandy. Martin Luther, I said we're going to bring back the giving machine, light the world. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. said darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. And I believe that Reverend King, when he was referring to light, I personally believe he was referring to the light of the sun, meaning the son of God. Mr. Schwartz reflects light most of the time. I was driving while everybody was here. I had to run an errand, and I was looking at the full moon. And I know we all reflect light in some ways, and some of us reflect more darkness. So I would say for the most part, you reflect light, not quite a full moon, but close to it. The reason this choice is hard for me, and Steve knows, is there have been a lot, there's been a lot of darkness, what I call poison, from people that I just believe are miserable, and misery loves company, people that I would think share my values, but they don't because they don't reflect light. So I want to start by saying that if you, if you call Steve an evil person, you don't know him. He's a good man. People can have different political points of view, and that doesn't mean that they're So that's my only comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion?
I do have a couple of things to say. This is difficult because I personally would have preferred making a motion and speaking to what I do support. I think this board should have been able to do that, but we're here in this place. Ms. Chai, you did mention that CSBA gave you a rubric, and I just want to remind you and others, we were actually denied being able to go to CSBA by the board majority. Dr. Komroski and I actually advocated to go and felt that it was important. There was an election that took place last year, and I know that this is a bipartisan position. However, in this day and age, things have changed, and the community did vote for four trustees who were more conservative. That was part of the expectation. Context is important. And so I want to say in regards to Mr. Schwartz, I don't question his love for education or the students. He has left the dais on multiple occasions instead of debating the issues. And Mr. Langworthy, I actually would let you know that I haven't been treated well. So I know you spoke to that, and I can speak differently as a woman. Beyond that, you know, elections do matter, and who stands behind them matters. He was a candidate endorsed by Tony Thurmond. I thoroughly disagree with the man up in Sacramento. I just do. The president of CTA did walk for him in the election. I don't agree with the president of the union or a lot of the union activism, which has actually created a lot of the chaos that we've experienced in the last couple of years. He did participate in recall efforts. He did vote no to BP 6000, which was a rubric that we worked on with people here at the dais to make sure that there was a rubric for disallowing anything that might be controversial in terms of pornography, vulgarity, obscenity. We worked with people up here. It took us months, and that was a no. It was a no to the idea that, let's just fly in the classroom the American flag and the California state flag. Let's not get into all the other flags. Let's just honor that together. Truly, that unites us as Americans. He voted no. So considering all those things, I honor the students who are here. I am glad that you gave your opinion. I will say, as an old person, sometimes you don't see all the perspectives, all the work, all the blood, sweat, and tears that goes on behind the scenes. And I'm not saying he hasn't given in that capacity. I'm saying I don't feel he represents the values of the community at this time for where we can still go. And so that's why I'm a no.
If there's no other discussion, we will call for the vote. We have an amended motion on the floor to elect Mr. Steve Schwartz as the governing board president for the 12-month period commencing on December 4th, 2025. Linay, can you please call rule? Schwartz?
Yes.
Wiersma?
No.
Komroski?
No.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Okay. Motion fails. This motion is Ms. Wiersma. So Ms. Wiersma.
She makes the motion.
You make the motion. You make the motion.
Okay. So I'm going to make the motion to nominate Dr. Komroski.
Do we have a second?
Dr. Komroski, if you want discussion, I have already committed not to second.
Second.
And now we can have discussion.
There are so many things I could say, and what I want to start with is the fact that this process has truly humbled me. And I know it has Dr. Komroski as well. We will both tell you we're different people now than we were three years ago. We haven't done everything right. We've made mistakes. But the one thing that has amazed me about Dr. Kay is that even in having a job threatened, even in going through a recall and deciding to come back, having health challenges, watching the things that he's gone through, has reassured me that he is a different person today, and he does care about students. He's a college professor. Let me tell you, I have talked with him about stories where he will honor every student that comes to see him, regardless of their background. He has a love for education and for students. He and I haven't always seen eye to eye. We've had our battles as a brother and sister. I've grown through it. We've made mistakes with each other. But I'm here to tell you, I fully believe that he will lead in this next year very differently. Students, he will hear you. We will make some good decisions. I'm confident in that. He did vote, straight out of the box, for parental rights. He was with me when this board majority said, we're going to go with a mental health accommodation. So if girls feel uncomfortable with perhaps someone who's not a biological boy in the dressing room, he voted no to that. We, we weren't, we weren't comfortable with that. He and I talked about privacy. Did we want to see a middle school in chaos and angst? No, we actually felt for all of those students. But we weren't heard. I wasn't heard in suggesting that initial suggestion of going for privacy. The board majority voted for the mental health, not Dr. K. He had the wisdom to see through it. Jack Guerrero, who I believe is very well respected by many in this room, on both sides of the aisle, including Mr. Barham, that was Dr. Komroski's nomination. Let me tell you, Jack is incredible sorting through the numbers, asking questions. He's exactly who should be on the advisory panel. There is wisdom in having appointed him. And I feel like the person I put on the board is doing a great job, too, and I'm so glad to hear everyone's collaborating. That is fantastic. Dr. K believes in protecting the innocence of children. And there might be some different viewpoints with that. I support him in that. I know that he's going to definitely work with the people at this dais. There's so much behind the scenes I could share with you, and I won't. I have limited time. But he's the one to lead this next year.
Is there any other discussion?
Thanks, Ms. Wiersma. I appreciate that. I just want to say there's a few things that were spoken of earlier. One is that there's millions of dollars of legal fees that I'm responsible for. That's not true. Another one is that I violated somebody's First Amendment right. Again, that's not true. I can, I can stay up here for a long time saying that, but I'll just off the cuff say that I wasn't elected to represent the union or the district. I was elected by the parents of this community, the majority, and they have a set of values that I told them, you elect me, I'm going to uphold these values that I'm running on that you agree with. Some of the students that come up here, I applaud you. It's a leadership skill to speak for your values. But you're minors. I represent the parents that put me here, not the students, because they're minors. The parent, excuse me, don't interrupt me. Thank you. Parents hold these values of the community. That is exactly why I got recalled, because I was steadfast shielding you, students, from darkness, whether you know it or not.
Okay, pause. I saw the, the person.
Could everyone just please hold your comments? Be respectful. Thank you.
So this is the first warning to...
Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Thanks. The hypersensitivity to racism, social justice, LGBTQAI+. I am a professor. I have gay, bisexual, trans students all in my class, and I've had them for 10 years. I love all of them, and they know that they love me and they respect me. We don't talk about that in the classroom. You know what we talk about? The curriculum, logic, critical thinking, ethics, modern philosophy, ancient philosophy, intro to philosophy. And so that has no place in the classroom. You want to do that with your club? Awesome. Again, your parents put me here. Your parents, because they're adults, and they have foresight to see into the future. I don't want my kids being harmed. That's exactly why we came to Temecula. I want somebody to shield my kids from wokeism. If you disagree with me, that's exactly why I was recalled, because some of you voted. But guess what? There's an army of you in this community that disagreed with them, and that's why I'm sitting up here right now. I do love the students. I'm on, I don't know how many committees. I won't even list them all. That's not prideful. It's because I have a lot of time to dump back to the community. And so I invest. Goals and accountability. I heard these students, or I heard these comments, he's not for the students. Are you kidding me? That's exactly why I ban pervasive obscenity, profanity, pornography in the schools and in supplemental material. I want to shield you from this potential harm. The parents laughing at me, literally, you're in darkness. And it's, it's fine. I'm going to continue to fight. And last but not least, goals and accountability. I've worked with another board member on this for 10 to 12 months with I don't know how many meetings where we raise, you know, cast scores, math scores, English scores, climate, you know, safety in the community at each and every site. And last but not least, I am for parental...
Thank you, Dr. Komroski.
Surveys, which were denied many times.
Do we have any other discussion from board members?
Yes.
I don't need all that time. I'm just going to say a few words. I'm going to reiterate what I said before. This is a nonpartisan position. I don't know what wokeism is. I don't practice, I don't practice wokeism. I don't know what it is. And if we're going to continue to bring politics into our schools, all we're going to do is divide this community. I'm not going to read all, I have a whole litany of things that Mr. Komroski is responsible for. I'm not going to read them out. Everyone knows what he has done. The CRT ban, the two-perb decisions, all those other things. The CRT decision is hanging out there. The judgment will come down. I don't know how much it's going to cost, but it's going to cost a lot. So I believe he has been not a good leader, and I believe he's cost us a lot of money, and I think his time is over. Time for a new face on the board.
Mr. Barham, any discussion? I believe that you had all determined it was one round. So at this time, we have an amended motion on the floor. He said, do you have a comment? Okay, he does not. Oh, Ms. Dr. Anderson.
Okay. Glad everyone's picked up on my darkness and light theme. I stole that from a local leader named Jim Jackson. He, I don't know if people know who he is, but he's very inspirational to me. And the, one of the reasons this decision is so hard is because of the absolute poison, bitterness, and darkness that is being spread throughout the conservative community and the Republican community and the Christian community. It's, I mean, part of me, I'm flattered. I think I live rent-free in people's heads every day. I can't believe the amount of attention and the fixation people have on me. I'm really not that important. I'm kind of a nobody. But the disappointment that I really have is that most of my friends are very conservative, and they've tried to go to bat for me. I, I'm not upset. My life is blessed. I think I have a life that I don't deserve. And I have enjoyed my life every day this year. I've got wonderful kids, a wonderful home, a wonderful family. The board knows I've been on vacation so much that they've had to ask me to start reporting when I'm here and when I'm not. I, I am very blessed, and I'm very lucky. But it saddens me that people, that miserable people, misery loves company, would try to create misery in our community. So the reason that this decision is hard is I wish that as a conservative community, we could have been spreading light and reflecting light, light from the sun. So it is, it is the actions and the behavior of people that I, that are not Christian in my book, because I've, I've been told that Christians reflect the light of Christ, but they tend to call themselves that. It's that behavior that has made me very apprehensive in supporting Dr. Komroski. Now, I don't know what your, his involvement is, so I don't want you to think I'm accusing you of anything. But I think that as elected leaders, we have the ability to influence others to be better. And many of you here have heard me say, don't give me that information. Don't spread that rumor. I am very grateful to people from the Republican, the Temecula Republican Women's Association that have not engaged in darkness and that have continued to reflect light, and I wanted to say that to them. So I am the deciding vote, it looks like, and it is very hard. And it's hard because of the behavior of some, of people that are here tonight.
Thank you, and I apologize, Dr. Anderson, for skipping you by on your, on your discussion. It's, yes. Okay, so we have an amended motion to elect Dr. Joseph Komroski as the governing board president for the 12-month period commencing on December 4, 2025. Linay, can you please call roll?
Schwartz?
No.
Wiersma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No.
Anderson?
No. Mr. Pastor. Next is Dr. Joseph Komroski.
I'll pass for the sake of time. Thank you.
And next is Mr. Steve Schwartz. Mr. Schwartz?
I'll pass.
Well, it leaves us with one. Thank you, Mr. Pastor. And it is Dr. Melinda Anderson.
I mean, really? Can I make a motion that I have a few minutes just to discuss? I, then I won't... No, I'm going to ask the board. The public doesn't get to decide. I'm going to make a motion before I'm for president so we can move on. Because we don't need to go a second round. I, this is, I hate being the deciding vote. And I'm asking the board, can I just explain myself? Can I give a little bit of context? I motioned that I get some ti, my time before I make a decision.
As much as you need.
Thank you. Three? I know, Mrs. Wiersma, I've not given you unlimited time before, but I have three, but I would like...
So I guess I'm confused what the plan is. What's the trajectory?
I am going to make a motion for president. You made a motion. Everyone has made their motion. I'm the last. I'm the deciding vote. I want to just make the motion, but I just want a little bit of time to explain myself before I make that motion. So I'm asking for some time. I'm making a motion, and I got a, I got a majority vote so I can just explain where I'm at right now and why this is a hard decision.
I would request that if you do do that, if anyone has additional short comments, that should be allowed for instead of...
I agree.
Okay.
Okay. So this is very, very hard for the reasons that I have discussed. Mr. Schwartz is the kindest person on the board. He is the most qualified. But we don't align politically, and there are a couple of things coming this year. Parental rights is up again, and we have our letter from the Department of Education. So those are my, those are my concerns. The other, the other one besides parental rights is that I'm hoping the Supreme Court stands for women's rights and women's privacy in women's safe spaces this year. And if they choose to act on that and stand for women's rights, because I've always been a women's, people have thought I was a crazy liberal women's right activist. Now, they say I'm a crazy conservative women's rights activist. I want the board to be able to enact policies that would protect women in our safe spaces. And the reason it is so hard is because there are terrible people in this community that have, I, I think they have poisoned our community. I mean, it's very, very sad for me. The blessing is I got off social media, and I have a whole new life now. But it's really sad for me that people would seek pleasure and joy out of trying to defame me and my family. They allow comments making fun of my appearance. There's comments that say my kids should be turned into child protective services, which they were. They've allowed comments saying that my, me and my husband are immoral. And I've had good people in this community go on those websites and try to defend our family. And they said that they're, they believed that their comments were being deleted, that the positive things that they were trying to say about me. And there's just, there's no darkness like that. Now, I feel sorry for the person whose life is centered on that type of darkness. It's gossip, but I'm also really disappointed in the fact that other people in the Republican community would pick up on it and to, and try to destroy good people. Like, I have no more, the highest amount of respect that I have for a person in this community is my husband. He is generous. He donates time. He donates money. People that know him absolutely respect him. So I can't wrap my mind around supporting that type of behavior and where it came from. And one of the things I really want, they said I could...
Yeah, I'm for, I'm limited time at this point.
One, one of the things that, that was really disappointing is the Republican, that some of the people in the Republican groups that chose to participate in gossip. I just don't, I still can't wrap my mind around it, how people were crying buckets of tears for Danny Gonzalez because of what happened to his business. And then to know that those same people thought it was okay to dox our family business, to attack my family, to, I, I just, I can't, that's the thing I'm struggling with. How do I reward that type of behavior? I'm going to ask, moving forward, that if you are a person that does reflect light, please don't follow those troll accounts. Don't engage with them. I think there's an addiction. We all know that addiction to likes, and you look and see how many people. And there's an addiction to the fight. Like, people get on and they love the argument and the fight. I remember I got caught up in it when I started my campaign with some of you. And then I realized, like, I don't want to be a part of fighting on the internet. So that's where I'm torn, because Mr. Schwartz has never engaged in any of that behavior. The PAC that supports him have come after me strongly, but they've never made personal attacks against my family. So that's why, that's why this is a hard decision. You know, you talk about what's the right thing to do, and the things that matter to me most. I don't know. So... Anyways, Mrs. Wiersma, you have a comment before I make my motion?
I do. I think the one thing that we all know is, school board's a different kind of position, but politics can be really ugly, locally, statewide, nationally. I wish it weren't so. It is. I think there's a lot of ways people could have done things differently on both sides. And really, as elected officials, we can't claim to be victims. In that sense, we've got to recognize it does come with the territory because we're all imperfect human beings trying to figure this whole thing out. And there's a lot of emotions on both sides. There's a lot of angst that Joseph and I and Danny felt for a couple of years, nonstop. My kid was attacked, you know? And we worked through it as a family. It wasn't fun. I'm a stronger person now. I'm a humbler person. I feel like last year, actually, if I had been voted in as president, honestly, we would have avoided some of the mess because I had the experience. Hadn't made all the right... mess, because I had the experience, hadn't made all the right decisions, who didn't have experience, and I knew how hard it would be. It is hard, so I recognize that. And I think you have had some good intentions. You have had a lot of things pulling at you, and I get that.
I don't want to be president.
I, I understand that, and actually, what's been great for me is I didn't get the position that I thought I should, should have gotten last year, but it's been a great year. I've learned a lot of things. I've enjoyed being a trustee and doing other aspects outside the leadership. It's actually brought me a lot of joy. So God kind of puts everything together for a reason, and I'm okay with that, and I'm okay not to be president. We've got a lot of family stuff going on next year that I'm so excited about, so I don't, I don't feel like I need to be at the helm. That's not my goal. But I do believe that Joseph's that right person, and as you mentioned, a lot of times, there's factions that, that speak, but he's usually the one that says, I don't want to be a part of this. I'm pulling out. You guys talk. I'm, I'm disengaged. I will tell you, that is what he says. So I'm sorry for what you've encountered. I think we've all made mistakes, but he's not been part of it, and you're not voting for the things that went on against you that were not right. You're voting for the man who has stood by his word, kept his promises, and hasn't been a part of scenarios that you mentioned. So I do think it's an easier decision than you think, especially knowing that you and I do share some of the same priorities of what we want to accomplish this next year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to take my right to nominate, because what you have said, I appreciate what you said about me, and I am horrified by the way you have been treated, and you and I have talked about it very often, and I've supported, I nominated you to be the president, and I supported you all through your presidency. But I don't want the burden to be on you. So I'm going to nominate Mr. Barham to be the president.
No, 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 it's, it's Melinda's turn.
It's my turn.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay.
But I have a comment, too.
Yeah.
I had a couple things to say, but it, one of the things I want to say is, leadership, it's tough when you're being yelled at by audience members, and real character is a board president who sits there and endures it and not walks off the dais and breaks quorum. That's real leadership. Mrs. Schwartz has broken quorum twice during the CRT workshop. This is not a personal attack. These are facts. These are facts.
Excuse me. Point of order.
No, no, no.
Point of order. A point of order.
You don't get that.
No, no, no.
This is not a personal attack.
I have a point of order.
Wait, let me.
See what I'm saying? Real leadership.
One minute. What is your point of order?
My point of order is, we are talking about nominations, and I am getting attacked personally. That is not what we're talking about. I am not the nominee at this point. So if he wants to talk about what you said, that's fine.
Mr. Schwartz, your point is well taken.
Thank you.
Dr. Komrosky, I am going to nominate someone, so let's keep it positive.
Dr. Anderson, I'll address you before you do that in the past, you know, and right now, it's getting a little heartfelt. There's been warfare up here between all five of us. I totally get it. There's one thing that I said to you that I'll rescind right now and apologize publicly, and I already apologized to you personally. I, when I called you a pathological liar, that was out of frustration, and I did. I'm not a clinical psychologist. I apologize.
I need to make it, I, last thing, I'm going to make my motion. I need to make a statement regarding Bob Tyler and advocates of faith and freedom. I need to make this publicly, and this is, again, this is influencing my vote. There, can I ask, Mr. Barham, you said that you were talking to a member of the community about some blackmail, and they said that I was actually blackmailing them. Was that true, or did I misinterpret you?
You really want to go there?
No, I, yeah, I do. I want to, I just want to make sure before I make this statement that I don't make up a lie. Did you say that, that someone said that I was blackmailing them?
Okay. You said to members of the community that you were being blackmailed, okay?
Okay.
And you also said it to Mr. Huff, who said it to me, and who said it to Mr. Schwartz.
That's your belief? Okay.
No, it is not my belief.
No, I'm, I'm asking your que, the question.
You know what? I, I have a question here.
Did, did someone tell you that I was blackmailing them at the meeting?
No, no. But here's the issue.
What?
We're not following decorum here, okay? We are not following decorum here, Dr. Valdez. We're, she, she's on some kind of.
Okay, if you're not going to answer that, I just need to clarify one.
You're on, you're on a rant here, okay, and we need to go back to three minutes, you know, make your motion. That's what we need to do here.
Okay, so I do want to clarify publicly that Mr. Barham was not at any meeting, and there was no blackmail, and that Bob Tyler was not involved in any blackmail. But this is important. Everyone needs to hear this.
All I can say.
Wait, this is important. Let me finish.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
I, I believe that this started, this blackmail thing started, and it's important because Mr. Barham and his statement worked with people that reported Bob Tyler to the California State Bar. That is a very serious offense. I'm a dentist, and the worst thing you could do is report someone to the dental board. You don't do that. So we have this mess now, and I believe that the intention of doing that, because the letter that keeps coming is that I can't vote for president. I have to recuse myself and not vote. So that, it's important that we say this because, publicly, because this is going to the state bar, and I want everyone to know. Bob Tyler, there was no blackmail. I didn't try to blackmail some guy that sometimes is portrayed as a leprechaun or like a yodeler, that guy on the internet. There was, there was no blackmail involved. David Huff used the word blackmail. I didn't use the word blackmail, and Bob Tyler was not involved in the mediation, and I think the person that mediator is here tonight and can attest that there was no, this was not a blackmail thing. I'm super disappointed that someone would try to maintain power on this board by having me recuse myself from a vote so that they could stay in power. And that is, that is very serious, and it's affecting my vote tonight. So in the end, I do want to say, Mr. Barham, you've had a lot to do with my next motion. I move to nominate Dr. Komrosky for the next school board president. Do I have a second?
Do we have a second? I second it.
And you guys can thank Emile Barham for that and his bad behavior.
Is there, is there any other further discussion?
Take a bath, change your suit.
Okay, we have a motion to elect Dr. Joseph Komrosky as the governing board president for the 12-month period commencing on December 4th, 2025. Lanay, can you please call roll? Schwartz.
I have a comment.
No, we, we can talk.
I have a comment.
We, we can talk here.
I'm sorry.
I, I did ask if there was discussion.
She just made a motion, so we need to discuss.
Correct. I did ask if there was discussion.
There is, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Don't be, don't be sorry, okay? Don't be sorry if you did what you thought was best. Don't be sorry. Just be ready to take the consequences of what you did. Just be ready for the, no, no, don't interrupt me.
Sounds threatening.
No, I'm not inter, I'm not threatening you. I'm making a statement. There will be consequence, there will be, there will be consequences for this election. There will be money consequences. There will be lawsuit consequences. Students will be affected. Parents will be affected. All kinds of people will be affected. I will do my best to stay on this board and do what I can, but if it gets to the point where I can't do it anymore, I will say adios, shalom, and good luck to all of you.
The hypocrisy from Mr. Schwartz is outstanding. He says that I personally attacked him. He just personally attacked and threatened Melinda, and I'm just going to call it out. Yes, he did. The consequences. I'm just saying, do you know how intimidating that is? And I'm, no, no.
Dr. Komrosky, please don't. Let's just keep moving on.
I just can't believe you just did that to the board president. I just can't believe that.
Let's just keep moving.
And I will say something else, and this is just going to be toned down a little bit. Just for the record, Mr. Schwartz said, I don't know what wokeism is. He's wearing it on his lapel pin, on his love collar.
Stop, Dr. Komrosky, stop.
I'm wearing an American flag which unites us all.
Okay, now, look, Dr. Komrosky, do you want me to change my vote, reconsider my vote?
I am correcting the record. He attacked, he, he came out for me.
We haven't voted yet, Dr. Komrosky, and this is like one of the things I'm struggling with, is I want to, I want to stand for these, these things that.
But see, I'm not attacking him.
No, but please, let's not do this. Mr. Schwartz, the power is in the majority, and we don't have to pass bad policy unless, I mean, it takes three people to pass a bad policy. I wouldn't have, I would have voted for the Harvey Milk. I, I'm sorry, I don't have a problem with that.
Can we take a vote?
I believe Mr. Barham has discussion.
Mr. Barham wants to talk about his.
Yeah, yeah. So I want everybody to know that Dr. Anderson went out into the community and said that she was being blackmailed by Tim Thompson, by Bob Tyler. I want everybody to know that she went to our general legal counsel, David Huff, and said the same thing. I'm being blackmailed. What do I do? And David Huff acknowledged that to Mr. Schwartz and to Dr. Woods, that she said these things, and she said these things because she's kind of nuts, okay? That, that's just kind of it. Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, yeah. I mean, whoever would go out and say these things, whoever would go out and say these things and have them not be true is just absolutely unbelievable. And in, and in addition to that, in addition to that, okay, in addition to that, she's being investigated by the district attorney.
No, I'm not.
By dete, yes, you are, by Detective Hamilton. I mean, there's all kinds of things that she's done here.
Do you want me to tell you what Detective Hamilton said?
You know what? I'm talking right now, okay?
Okay.
That this person, yeah, this person.
This is, this is why.
To blame this on me is just absolutely unbelievable.
Could we vote? Unbelievable.
Well, Jen laughed. Does anyone want to know what the district attorney said?
No, can we vote?
You want to know?
We will call for a vote when we have our two board members return.
I'm so sorry. This is why, though, I can't support people that support Mr. Barham. I just.
Okay, at this time, we have a motion on the floor to elect Dr. Joseph Komrosky as the governing board president for the 12-month period commencing on December 4th, 2025. Lanay, can you please call roll? Schwartz.
No.
Weirzma.
Yes.
Komrosky.
Yes.
Barham.
No.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
Come on, liar.
And so at this time, we will take about a two-minute recess. We will call for this short break so seats can be rearranged.
We've got to elect a clerk.
No.
I know.
You guys can elect a clerk and a second clerk and do whatever you want. I want that on the agenda for January.
So we'll take a two-minute break?
I have to sit.
So we can rearrange some seats. We'll take about a two-minute break.
I'm going to sit through this.
Go ahead.
Let, let me get every... You wanna hit the gavel?
Okay, at this time, we're going to resume our meeting.
All right. We'll wait, we'll wait.
Okay, at this time, we will resume our meeting. And the new board president, Dr. Joseph Komroski, will conduct the rest of the meeting. Welcome, Dr. Komroski. You can now proceed.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the election of the board clerk. I'm gonna make a motion to suspend the former rule on using a bucket and just go straight to appointment. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's the rest of the board thing?
No.
You wanna use the bucket?
Yes.
Let's take a vote. And the, and to be clear, the motion is to suspend using the bucket and just going straight to motion. And we can go in order, or, yeah.
Schwartz?
No.
Weirzma? Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No.
The motion is to suspend the bucket so we can go straight to...
I vote to suspend the bucket.
Motion passes three to two. We're on to item three, election of the board clerk. Do I have a motion to, to elect a governing board clerk for the 12-month period commencing December 4th, 2025? I motion to nominate Steve Schwartz.
I decline.
Do we have a second?
He declined.
I second.
He declined.
I said I declined.
You don't wanna be clerk.
No, I don't wanna be the clerk. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, can, can I just ask you to consider it?
Let's just have discussion, yeah.
I seconded so we can have...
We have a motion in a second. We're gonna have discussion.
And I wanna ask Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Schwartz, the, the power is...
She's out of order.
Can I speak first?
Mr. Barham, can you let her, can you let her speak? Thanks.
We have a motion in a second now. I'd like to speak on it.
And then if you wanted to start the timer, Lanay, please, thank you so much.
Two minutes, whatever. Mr. Schwartz, I want you to consider the, the balance of having you and Dr. Komroski together. We don't need to, we don't need to stack the leadership again and we do need someone, we need oversight for the president. Just think about, think about it. We do need, and, and you still have two years. I still think you're gonna be president within your term. The power's in the majority. The president is gonna run the meetings and, just think about it. The power's in the majority and I think it would be important for you to represent people and have oversight. We don't need this to look like it did last time with three conservatives all in leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Schwartz?
I'm not gonna be anyone's mate if I'm not the captain. I don't wanna be on this crew.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Barham? Do you wanna talk? Discussion, two minutes. All right. Anybody else wanna make a motion for the clerk, board clerk? The motion, yeah, it's, well... There's a motion in a second. We can, we can complete the vote. Let's complete it officially.
Okay, Schwartz?
No.
Weirzma?
No.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion fails. I nominate Dr. Anderson for board clerk. Do I have a second?
No, please don't. Anyone, please don't second for me.
Seren, you discussion? Lanay, please call roll. The motion is to nominate Dr. Anderson as board clerk.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
No.
Komroski?
No.
Barham?
No.
Anderson?
Who was just nominated? Sorry, I was just threatened and now I'm talking to an attorney. I'm super upset right now. But it was just motion.
The motion to...
The motion fails. I nominate to elect, uh, motion to elect Mrs. Weirzma as board clerk. Do I have a second?
I will second that. I served for two years and I will gladly step up again.
Any discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Weirzma. Lanay, please call roll.
Schwartz?
No.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No.
Anderson?
Motion fails, three, two. Any, anybody else want a motion?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Barham to be the clerk.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. I've done the job.
No, please no. You guys, Mr. Barham, you just threatened my husband. No, stop!
Point of order.
Point of order.
Take your antics someplace else, Dr. Anderson.
Dr. Anderson, you spoke, you spoke, so I'll, I'll recognize you and let's just go one at a time.
Come on, let's go.
I've given her the floor.
We're gonna file a police report against you, Mr. Barham. You made a direct threat and this is why Dr. Komroski is president. Because I didn't believe that Mr. Schwartz could stick up for the rest of us.
Okay, Dr. Anderson.
He's, see, this is exactly, this is exactly why I made the decision I did.
Okay, Dr. Anderson.
Okay.
We, we, we hear you loud and clear.
And you guys can have him, like, I, I'm very glad, like, have him. He's all yours.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any discussion, Mr. Barham? Okay.
I'll just call the question.
All right, let's, um, let's call roll if nobody else has discussion.
This is to elect Emile, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
No.
Komroski?
No.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Here we go again. Does anybody have another motion? We've exhausted, "I can't be clerk."
I have a suggestion. We could put names in a bucket. We can motion to put, like, I motion that we put Steve Schwartz's name in a bucket. And if any, but not, I, no, I don't wanna do that because...
Dr. Anderson, at this point, it's late in the meeting. Mr. Schwartz does not want the position. I've nominated Jen. She wants it. You don't want it? We, we have to make a decision. Okay, then let me nominate you again.
Because I don't want the same thing that we had before. Like, I am trying to do something different. You guys are upset, but I, I had to put myself first and the safety of my family when the FBI comes after me because Mr. Barham and two women, like, can I, can we push the, or do we have to do clerk?
It might be legally permissible to push this to the next meeting, but Dr. Anderson, I'm motioning for you as clerk.
No, I'm, I, I don't want to.
And I call for a second. Do I have a second? I made a motion.
Second.
We got a second. Lanay, please call roll.
No, I wanna discuss. I'm gonna say one thing. I'm gonna, I, I want you guys to know, the reason that Dr. Komroski is sitting right there right now is because Mr. Barham's actions. I can't tolerate any of this, but reporting people to the FBI so that they can stay in a power position is a terrible thing to do.
Dr. Anderson, point of order. We, we completely understand.
And him threatening my husband is a terrible thing to do.
We completely understand. That's why we wanna get through these motions so we can adjourn, so that you can go home and be safe. Trust me, we get you. But we have a motion in a second to elect you. Otherwise, we're not electing a clerk. It might be legally permissible and I might have to put us in a recess to call the law to find out, can we suspend the clerk? And I believe we can. That's where we're at.
Call roll, it's fine. Call roll.
Lanay, please call roll.
Yes.
What's the motion here?
To elect Dr. Anderson as clerk.
Um, Weirzma?
No.
Komroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No.
No.
Okay, we're at an impasse legally. This is the second round now and, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do a two-minute recess. We're calling the attorney. I'm gonna recommend to push this to the next meeting, but we're buying out whether it's legally permissible. And then we're gonna go to the vice clerk. Jose was the mic on. Due to safety concerns, we're adjourning the meeting. All additional items will be pushed to the next meeting due to safety. Thank you. Please talk to Brian, the director of security, if you have an additional...